Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Titusville Council Meeting of August 27, 2019 at 6:30 PM. We have a quorum. I will call this meeting to order. We have Pastor Chris Garrison with us this evening to say the invocation. He's from Faith Baptist Church. Sir, will you do the honors?
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for the rain. Father, even as it rains outside, we are mindful of those who, over the next several hours and several days, may be in the path of tropical storm Dorian, may become a hurricane Dorian. Father, we pray for emergency workers, and we pray for city workers, and we pray for residents of islands and towns and cities and villages, fathers, they prepare for storms. God, we pray that you would protect. We pray that you would guide this storm, that you would guide those who have the responsibility to make decisions about these things, and we ask for wisdom in those areas. Father, we thank you for the opportunity that we have to meet in this assembly tonight. We thank you for the freedom that is available to us, the United States of America, to gather together to discuss the needs and the concerns of our community. Father, we thank you for the people who sit before us tonight, who have been put in that place as they make some of these decisions concerning these needs. Father, we ask for wisdom for them. We ask for understanding. Lord, we ask that they be free to prioritize those things that are most important. Father, we pray that you would give them unity as a group. Father, I pray that you would give understanding to us as citizens, that we would support our government, that we would pray for our government. Father, that we would act in a way that honors the privilege that we have to live in this country with these freedoms. Father, I pray for this assembly tonight. I don't know the needs that will be expressed tonight, but Father, I pray that they will be expressed in clear ways, Father. I pray that they would be expressed in a calm manner. Father, I pray that attitudes and tempers would be kept in check, and that, Father, you would be honored and glorified in everything that's said and done. Father, I thank you as a follower of Christ tonight. I thank you most of all for the freedom that we have to relate to you through your Son, Jesus Christ. We thank you for the sacrifice that was made by him so many years ago, and the freedoms that we enjoy today flow from the freedoms that we have in Jesus Christ. And so, Father, we thank you for those things also. God, again, we just ask for your blessing upon this evening. Thank you for those who have sacrificed their time and their energies to be out to this meeting tonight, and, Lord, I pray that, again, that all things would honor and glorify you, and it's in Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Well done. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clark, would you please read the procedures for addressing council?
Yes, sir. The following is the procedure for public comment and participation. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the items being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions and requests, but not both. No sign-up card is required. And finally, citizens shall not comment, excuse me, comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items.
Thank you, Clark. Next item is...
Mayor, before we get to the minutes, I've got a couple agenda item adjustments for you and council to vote on. First, we'd like to add an agenda item to the city attorney's report. It's a settlement agreement.
We can do them all together.
Okay. And second, I'd like to move item 12D after item 6A.
Which item? 12B?
12D as a delta to after 6AlphaA.
I want to move item 12D after item 6A and before item 7.
And the city attorney's report? The city attorney's report?
The first item would be to add an agenda item to the city attorney's report.
Oh, okay. Are we moving that up, though?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Would somebody like to make that motion? You can take...
No.
What I understood...
Yeah, I think it's not clear to me either.
Thank you very much. You're adding the settlement agreement to 16, correct?
That's the Price versus City of Titusville case.
Right. Exactly. And then the last thing is just moving, I'm going to open it, moving 12D up after 6A. That's it.
12B after 16?
12D after 6A. 6A, 6Alpha.
Okay. All right. Okay. Do I have a motion?
That was a motion.
All right. I have a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like, sign? Passes unanimously. Just tell me when they come in, because I'm still confused where they are. As I understood, we're moving 16 up.
No, sir. We're adding an item to 16.
Okay. All right. I thought we had that one down, but I guess I didn't. Next item, can we just get this together here? Is, we didn't do the approval of minutes?
I'd move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting on July 23, 2019, and the special city council meetings on August 14 and August 16, 2019.
Any corrections or additions? I hear none. Oops, I see a, you already had that there. I see no corrections or additions. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like, sign? Passes unanimously. Item 5, Special Recognitions and Presentations.
Yes, sir. Item 5A, Space Coast EDC is starting a new campaign supporting Brevard Military. The goal of the initiative is to demonstrate local support of all military in our community, including military personnel, families, and veterans. The Space Coast EDC is asking that each city promote their campaign with a resolution or proclamation supporting our salute, our military campaign. A part of this campaign will be using bumper stickers and other promotional material that will be provided to each city. Mayor, I think you have a proclamation there.
I have a resolution for this one. The Economic Development Commission. I will read that resolution. "The resolution of the City of Titusville, Florida, supporting the Space Coast Economic Development Commission salutes our military campaign and providing for an effective date. Whereas the Economic Development Commission of Florida Space Coast EDC is officially launching its new countywide salute our military recognition campaign, and whereas Brevard County is home to Patrick Air Force Base, Cape Canaveral Air Force Station, the 45th Space Wing, the Naval Ordinance Test Unit, Florida Air National Guard, the United States Coast Guard, and numerous military organizations and their families who lend to the strength and engine that drives the economy and quality of life of Brevard County, Florida, and the nation. Whereas the EDC will spark an explosion of regional awareness and appreciation of our United States Armed Forces and their family members, who have an economic impact of $1.1 billion in fiscal year 2017, and military retirees residing in Brevard County who receive over $992 million in military pensions, and whereas it's appropriate to recognize, honor, and encourage the dedication of commitment of members of the United States Armed Forces in serving the United States, and whereas building partnerships between the public-private sector of our military personnel and their families solidifies our commitment of the United States Armed Forces in preserving our freedoms. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Titusville. The City Council supports celebrating our military by the EDC Space Coast Salutes Our Military Bumper Sticker Campaign. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. It will be passed and adopted this 13th day of August 2019. Signed, Walt Johnson, Mayor." We need a motion on that at this time, or? Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the Supporting the Space Coast Economic Development Commission Salute Our Military Campaign proclamation.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Roll call.
Oops, roll call. Well, sorry. Resolution. Clark, please call roll call.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Sir? Okay.
Would you like to say anything, sir?
I had the opportunity to address the council a couple of weeks ago and just reiterate our thanks and appreciation and partnership with the City of Titusville and all of the members of our armed forces and their families who sacrificed so much on our behalf, and we greatly appreciate them, not only for the economic benefit that it provides to our community, but frankly, for the blood, sweat, and tears that makes our freedom possible.
Well, thank you very much, sir. And I'd better, I want personally, thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
And ma'am, if you hold this, and if you're to get over there, and we'll get on either side...
I promise.
...and smiles.
Next item, city manager?
Yes, sir. The next item is a proclamation for Patriots' Day, September 11, 2019, and Mayor, you have the proclamation.
Yes. If you don't mind, I'm going to take a little bit of water before I start this one. Here we go. Official proclamation, City of Titusville, Florida, whereas in the United States, Patriot Day occurs on September 11 of each year in memory of the people killed in the September 11, 2001 terrorist attack, and whereas on September 11, 2001, the first responders of New York City demonstrated the true meaning of the word hero, and they went forward into known danger to help and rescue others. Whereas the loss of life and damage that these terrorists cause form the biggest act of terrorism ever on United States soil. Nearly 3,000 people died in the attacks, and the economic impact was immense. And whereas the aftermath of the attacks, President George Bush proclaimed Friday, September 14, 2001, as a national day of prayer and remembrance for the victims of the terrorist attack on September 11, 2001. And whereas Joint Resolution 71 designates September 11 as Patriots' Day and requests the President to issue a proclamation each year regarding the observation of Patriot Day and the display of the U.S. flag at half-staff in honor of the individuals who lost their lives as a result of the terrorist attack on September 11, 2001. Whereas President Bush signed Joint Resolution 71 into law on December 18, 2001, and used the authority of the resolution to proclaim September 11, 2002, as the first Patriot Day, and whereas the City of Titusville is blessed to have the same caliber of heroes in our own first responders community, and now therefore I, Walt Johnson, by the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby proclaim September 11, 2019, as Patriots' Day, and I urge all citizens to recognize the importance and vital service Titusville responders play in our daily lives, both in times of safety and conflict. Signed, Walt Johnson, Mayor. I have the resolution now, ma'am, right?
Yes, sir. I don't know that there's any way you receive it, though, but...
When have you known me not to say so? Oh, don't take my notes. Don't take my notes. On September 11, 2001, demonstrated the fact that true heroes don't wear capes. They wear stars of life. They wear badges. They wear turnout gear. While thousands were exiting the Twin Towers, hundreds of first responders were entering the towers. While Tower One was crumbling to the ground, first responders continued to head up the stairs of Tower Two. On that day, 405 first responders never got to go home to their families. On that day, 405 men and women lost their lives during their, doing their job. On that day, 405 heroes' lives were cut short while they saved the lives of others. Whenever I think of those 405 placing their lives in harm's way, I hope and pray that at least once on the way up those stairs, they heard the words, "Thank you," or at least heard the words once, "God bless you." Throughout my work with the Titusville Flag and Memorial Committee and other organizations, I'm always amazed at the outpouring of support for our military and our veterans from the officials of Titusville and from the community. The attendance at the Memorial Day, Veterans' Day, Reefs Across America events, lives across the line, just to name a few, is always first rate. But when I look at what we're doing for our hometown heroes, our first responders, we fall just a little short. The Flag and Memorial Committee would like to see that change. Our first responders need, they deserve, to hear the City of Titusville say, "Thank you." They should hear at least once a year, if not more, "God bless you." Not just when they're forging forward headlong into danger, as we head to safety, not while they're placing their lives in danger to save ours, but every day. Many of our communities across the nation started celebrating the Blue Mass each year in 1939. It started in Washington, D.C. by Father Thomas Dade, and it started as a Catholic service. It has grown nationwide as a necumenical service. This is not a memorial service, but it's a time to bring the community together, to say thank you to our first responders. What started as one man's efforts to say just that has grown several thousand communities. The closest one that I'm aware of is Orlando. It's my hope, and our hope, that all churches in the community will join us in this day, and all citizens of the city will join us. This year, we celebrate at St. Teresa's Catholic Church just off of South US1, September 14 at 11 o'clock. The event is not meant to replace lives on the line, but it's also meant to extend that celebration. It is our hope to continue the Blue Mass or Patriot service annually on the first Saturday after September 11 each year, or the weekend of, if September 11 falls on the weekend. Tonight, I'm here to ask for your support and for you to, ask for you to join us out there, and I hope to see you all there. And, Mr. Mayor, I hope you're going to be able to read that again at the ceremony.
Well, you better bring it back.
Yes, sir. I will.
There you go. We have the next picture. We happen to have a representative in the audience. Would you come forward and help me accept this, please?
Oh, there you go. Right.
I hate to get you off the job, and actually, I'm going to let you stand in the middle.
That's a great idea. I personally want to thank you and all of our brave first responders, men and women.
And I will have it there for you, sir.
Yes, sir. The next agenda item is letters of appreciation that were received from employees. Michael Abernathy, Scott Einkauf, Kyle George, Jeffrey Harris, Aaron Jolly, Lucas Lamothe, Jeremy McCoy, Jermaine McCoy, I'm sorry, Lucas Stener, Ronald Smith Jr., and Sam Astorio from Community Development Department. Sir, that brings us to agenda item 6A, which is the North Brevard Commission on Park and Recs. The terms of regular members Sonny Aguilar and Bianca Alamo expire on August 31, 2019. Members Aguilar and Alamo have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board as a city council appointee and requested reappointment for a two-year term to expire on August 31, 2021.
Okay, council. I have a light on, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I simply want to say, this is the board that I'm on from the council. I'm the city liaison for this board. I think it's a very productive board, Jeff Davis being the leader of that from North Brevard Parks and Recreation. It's an outstanding board with a lot of accomplishments, but I want to say that I would endorse Bianca and Sonny tremendously. Bianca is one who, we have this job that we check our parks. We all have parks, and we check our parks and give our report. She gives great reports on her parks, and you can tell the parks she's not happy with and the parks she is happy with, and she checks other people's parks, too. So she is outstanding. Sonny is also outstanding in kind of a sort of different way, because Sonny, obviously, is Coach P.'s, I'd say, right-hand man, as I call him, but his assistant. And so there are some times that Sonny can't be there because he's in Tallahassee, but the connections that he allows us with the state and the understanding we get from the state, so Sonny is outstanding and does his job as well. But these are two very valuable members of our North Brevard Parks and Recreation Board.
So I will, I'm open for a motion.
Sir, can I move to reappoint Sonny Aguilar and Bianca to... I wasn't going to try it.
I have a motion and a second. Would you care to say anything, ma'am?
Tell us about your parks.
My parks look great right now. Great. Now, after the storm comes, it's another thing. But I've had the pleasure of serving on North Brevard Parks and Rec with Mr. Walt Johnson and Dan Diesel, both. I've been there for a while, and I have to say, just from being there, I've seen growth. I've seen updating. I've seen a lot happening in Titusville, and it's been very pleasurable to watch. I've seen, we've seen staff roll over and go to new and better places, so they're coming here, being trained great, and we're getting more great staff coming in. Social media has had more hits. We've had movies in the parks. I mean, everything has just been growing with Parks and Rec, and I'm very pleased with it, and I want to say thank you for appointing me again.
Thank you very much for saying that, ma'am. That's very much appreciated. Next item, sir?
We'll need to do the vote, sir.
Oh, my gosh. Don't answer.
I made the motion.
I have a motion in a second. I didn't think we did, but I wasn't sure, but you let me down.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Okay. Is there any further discussion? I don't see any. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Next item, sir.
Yes, sir. This will be Item 12D.
Okay.
Which is a discussion on invocations at council meetings and possible alternatives. Currently, the city agenda provides for an invocation at the start of the council meetings, and an invocation is provided by a representative from one of the local churches. Each church in the city is sent an invitation by the clerk's office to provide an invocation, and any person that responds or asked to be included is placed on the invocation list. This is an inclusive practice that does not limit or discriminate between those individuals to be included. Certainly, the council has options to continue this procedure for invocations, provided that it remain inclusive and open to all religions, faiths that desire to participate in the invocation process. Second option would be to eliminate the invocation from council meetings and replace the invocation with a moment of silence or meditation, and the code would have to be amended accordingly. Brevard County is currently beginning its meetings with a moment of silence. Lastly, the council could decide to eliminate invocation from the agenda and not add a moment of silence to the agenda alternative. So with that, recommended action is council discuss and provide direction to staff regarding the current invocation processes and procedures and alternatives, and we have one card. And, Richard?
Mayor, before we have a card, I'd like to add to the agenda. If you recall, last meeting, I provided you a case of the Williamson versus Brevard County ruling. That's in the 11th Circuit Court of Appeals. The appellate court recognized that local governments do have significant freedom to open their legislative session with prayer. However, in selecting invocation speakers, the local government may not categorically exclude from consideration speakers from a religion simply because they do not like the nature of its beliefs. While the appellate court ruled that the county selection process had -- was unconstitutional, it did not address all issues in that case, and did send the case back to the Middle District Court for further consideration. For example, the court stated that it has no occasion to reach further constitutional questions regarding whether atheist or secular humanist must be allowed to deliver non-theistic invocations. All that we hold today is that the board's current invocation speaker selection procedures are unlawful. As stated, that's the county selection, you heard the city selection process, which we believe to be inclusive. I just wanted to point out, the appellate court only ruled on their selection process. That case is continuing in litigation on other issues, such as, I just read with regard to the atheist humanist, there may be other issues the county is wanting clarification on, so that is going back to the Middle District. With regard to the moment of silence of the county, that's because of the ongoing litigation that they're doing the moment of silence. There has not been a decision permanently on what to do at the county level. I just wanted to clarify that. This council was just interested in what was going on in that case. I provided you that summary, and council asked that we put it on this agenda for further discussion. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Before we do that, City Manager, look on your list on Item 12B.
We're on 12D, sir.
D?
Delta. Yes, sir.
All right, okay. Any thing -- any member of council wants to talk about?
I got a card.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I guess, City Attorney, my question, or whoever, maybe perhaps City Manager, remind me why this came up?
This was included in your agenda merely as information on the current status of the Williamson versus Brevard County case. That was provided to you to let you know the update on the federal law with regard to selection procedures at Brevard County, merely as information.
Okay, and at this point, it's not because we've got an issue with the city of Titusville, and we haven't got anybody in litigation, and there's no issue with Titusville right now with the invocation?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Member Jordan?
Thank you. After our last meeting, I thought about what we were doing, and I tend to -- actually, I changed my mind, to be honest with you, because of the fact that we don't have a problem. And to me, we were trying to solve a problem that we didn't have, and I believe that because we are an organization that is very inclusive, I really think we should be more pliable and we should be more flexible than, I think, what we were portraying. I understand totally the concern about doing this, but I don't think it warrants us changing the way we have been doing things for many, many years, because it really isn't a problem. If it becomes a problem, then we can certainly readdress it, but right now, I think we should just leave it as it is, have the invocation, and see where it goes. We may not have any problem. And besides, if someone comes up and they invoke someone that we don't agree with, we don't have to agree with it, you know? But it is their right, constitutional right, to be able to speak, and for us to try to silence someone, or silence everyone, because we fear that something is going to happen in the future, I don't think is right. So, that's why I've changed my mind about this. Thank you.
Member Nelson?
Okay. This time, I'm going to be the conservative around here. We're not -- we don't have a problem currently, but like all pending litigation, you don't know it until it slaps you in the face. And so, I would rather be a little bit safe. It's not -- in a litigation-free society, I might change my mind and say, let's do something different. But in a society that we live in, I think it would be the safer course to go to a moment of silence. Is it what we all want? Maybe not, but it would be the safer course.
And that's coming from an attorney?
And that's coming from an attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor?
And I don't know that I could say I'm in the area of changing my mind, because last meeting, you may recall, I wasn't happy about having to bend and do the things we do, because there might be somebody out there that wants to say something different, and they're not happy with the Christian, you know, beliefs, et cetera. But I also stepped to the side and said, I also, having worked in public schools for 35 years, realized there is always that separation and that concern. But in this case, I feel like we don't have the problem yet, and I realize, we could do a lot of things up here on the possibility of having a problem one day, you know, flatten all the curbs, because somebody might step off and hurt their ankle or something. And I'm not trying to be silly, I'm trying to say, there's a lot of things out there we could deal with later. We're not dealing with it now, and something I do with every meeting, and I don't think I have the numbers exactly right, but I write $48,000. Dollars? Wow. Wow, where'd that come from? Forty -- I'm still trying, I think I have to talk.
Who are you giving it to?
Forty-eight thousand people. Just the number, forty-eight thousand, we'll leave the dollars out of it, because that's about what we have in Titusville. And I write that down there because I don't want to get caught up in the emotions of somebody saying this, or somebody saying that. What's the best for the 48,000? I truly believe that our 48,000, not everybody, and, you know, we may get -- I may get emails on this, but to me, I've lived here since 1965, I feel that the majority of our 48,000 feel that we should not stop having an invocation just because we might have somebody get upset with us. No one has yet, but at the same time, if they do, then they can get in line, and we can deal with them as we go. So, that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Member Stokel?
I think you guys know how I feel about this from last meeting, but just to touch on what Member Jordan said, what Member Diesel said, Vice Mayor Diesel, we haven't had an issue, and I understand, Member Nelson, your concerns with the legal aspects of it, and I would have some concerns if I felt our policy was not inclusive right now, but I believe it is, and that's just, we have that policy there. I don't feel like we are open to any potential litigation at this point, the way it's written. So, I feel very confident and comfortable with what we have going on right now, and what Member Jordan said, if this does become an issue down the road, I think that we can address it at that point, and I don't feel like it would be too late. Our only concern would be as if somebody, one of us up here, quite honestly, was rude to somebody that came forward because we didn't personally agree, and I just don't feel or see, foresee us doing that, so, those are my thoughts.
I'm going to join in at this point, and I haven't changed my mind. I don't think it's a matter of if it happens at all, I think it's a matter of when it happens. It has happened before, not on this particular level, but there was a council person some years back, and I wasn't on council at the time, but I was involved with the situation because I knew the council person, and -- but that person, for whatever reason, I can't give you a good reason, decided to call and let the -- let a group of Wiccans speak. And I won't go into that issue, but the reaction was so horrendous and so threatening that that council person was advised by the city manager at the time to wear a flak jacket to the meeting, and she received phone calls, she received all kinds of things, to the point where she resigned after two years on the board. So, this is an emotional item, and I understand that, and, you know, going back as to why we do this, our forefathers wrote in the Constitution and put in there that there should be a separation of church and state. I think they were very wise in that, and foreseeing the future. We have a very diversified, thank goodness, group of people in the United States, and religion is one of those things that people get very excited about. More recently, the courts have determined that what the founding fathers meant is that we have to be inclusive of everyone, regardless of their beliefs, regardless whether we find them acceptable or we find them horrific. We have to let them do it. If we let one do it, one group do it, say, an invocation, then the others must be able to do that as well. Again, I don't, I don't think, since this is open, sort of, we had a, we had a situation we were going to talk about this evening, that we talked about the other night in session, but the fact is that when it comes to the law, there's a lot of strange situations that come about, and I feel this will undoubtedly be one, because it's going, going around, and once it starts, it gets bigger and bigger, and will be back to bite us. And I would personally like to go to a moment of silence, because that lets everybody do whatever they want in that period of time, or meditation, either one, or silent meditation, and call on whomever they want to call on, and it's not insulting to anybody or disturbing to anybody, so that's, that's my feelings, which kind of coincides with yours. I see another light up there. Member Nelson?
The only thing I was going to say is, if the decision tonight is to continue the way we are, that we might want to consider limiting the time. I would hate to have somebody get up under the guise of saying a prayer, and 20 minutes later, we're still waiting for them to end that prayer. So, I think a time limit would be good, no matter who it is. So, that was just my suggestion.
What would you suggest?
I would say two minutes.
Two minutes?
I just wanted to remind you, do have cards.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Do have cards. Yes.
Okay. Anyone else like to say anything? All right, are there, there are cards on this item?
Yes, sir, one card, Stan Johnston.
Not to me.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I submitted a card on this the last time it came up, and wasn't given an opportunity to speak, but I have read a good bit of what was in the last agenda packet, which was the case that Attorney Broome was into. Now, as far as history goes, if we go back to when the, when the, oh, we were ruled by the British, is that in order for Jefferson to be an attorney in the Commonwealth of Virginia, he had to be a member of the church. That's the way it was. Now, that was, that's a horrible thing. In other words, in order to be an attorney, a judge, something, you had to be a member of the church. You know, that was a church that, okay. So, just a little bit of history on this. I must confess, at one time, I was an atheist. I'm not an atheist anymore, but there's some bad atheists, and there's some, some not-so-good atheists, and there's some good atheists. But this particular petition that, that has been received by Brevard County was signed by especially some atheists. I don't know what they're going to do for an invocation, and I'd like to see what they do, but, but it would be interesting what they do. But, but here's the way I see this issue, is I want to agree with Sarah Stokel, who was the only one dissented the last time on the vote. I'm agreeing with Sarah, is that I see this, that if the, if you do go to a moment of silence, it's like the atheist win in this case. I'm serious. That's the way I look at it. And I've come to you from, from the, from the standpoint, is that I've been over to Poland, and I've been with a number of Russians, and Polish people who were in the, let's say, ruled by communism, and by golly, in order to be a member of the political party to make decisions, you had to declare yourself as an atheist, and you still do. Communist Party is an atheistic party, no religion at all. So, anyhow, I would welcome other people who have religions, because almost all these religions that I know of, they have, do unto others as you would have done unto you, and so do most atheists, but, you know, there's shysters among them. So, this is a, this is something to, I would, I would go along with Sarah Stokel, and also Mr. Jordan, is that I would, I would rather us not deal with this when we don't have a problem, and that we would continue as we have to have an invocation. And I would like, I would also be interested, like I said, to see what, what would an atheist say up here? I don't know. It might be something worthwhile. So, that's all I have to say, share with you, and God bless you, and hope you make a good decision. Thank you.
Okay, I would only add that, again, my, my fear is that we leave that door cracked, and people come charging through it before we can actually do anything, and that can happen in our system, because I'll just go back on the history of what we've done and use that as the rest of the door opening, but Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just for clarification, last week's vote was not for or against this, this was just to have the staff bring us back a report.
That's correct.
And I voted for that, because I did want to hear what the options were going to be. As I said, and I said again, you know, I am very much concerned about non-Christians losing their voice, and I know that that's, that's a very controversial thing, it shouldn't be. I can tell you, again, having been in the schools for 35 years, you know, we used to have a prayer, and then we used to have a moment of silence, and all of that's getting pushed out. And if I can ever have a say to keep something from being pushed out, maybe this is the place to do that.
There was a mention of putting a time limit on it. Whoever would like to make the motion, please consider that seriously, I think that could be a prudent thing to do. Would anybody like to make the motion? This is unusual.
I'm sorry, if no one wants to talk, I just think we should just leave things the way they are. Now, I put a time limit on it, I was just thinking about the minister who was here today, I think that was longer than two minutes, for sure, and he said some really good thing.
You could make it more than two minutes. The idea is that it doesn't get to be 20 minutes.
Well, I know, but we haven't had a problem, so why, why even put a limitation on it? So, I would just vote for us to just leave things as they are, and then if there's a problem in the future, we'll take everything.
You would vote for that, or you're making a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, a second and a third. Any further discussion? Clerk, let's do a roll call on this.
So, the motion to leave things as they are... Member Nelson?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
No.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes with two against, three, four. Okay, next item, sir?
Petitions and requests from the public.
Petitions and requests from the public.
Do we have any body from the public that would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor and Council, Dwight Severs, Titusville. I had the pleasure on Friday, August 23rd, at the invitation of the Tree Committee, to attend a workshop dealing with tree protection in the city of Tampa. There were, one council member was there, a member of city staff, representatives from Brevard County, city of Cocoa, city of Rockledge, representatives from the development community. Matter of fact, Mr. Honeycock was there, as well as other individuals. I felt as though it was a very productive meeting. I think it reveals that the city of Titusville probably needs to update its codes and ordinances. I would respectfully defer to the council member and city staff as far as their thoughts concerning the meeting. The bottom-line item that they told us at the end, they probably could have told us in the beginning, was that the city of Tampa's staff, as well as their legal department, had said that it was very important that in drafting any ordinance, that all groups have a seat at the table, and all parties working together. And more than likely, and they described their experience, where they had a report, the city staff was dragging its feet in preparing the ordinance, a group of citizens that wanted an ordinance, and the Development Committee wanted it resolved. They came up with their own ordinance. Then it came back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, City Council, and obviously, city staff didn't like it, so they had to work, work, work. The bottom-line recommendation they gave was that please invite all the representatives who have an interest in this subject to work together. And I would respectfully urge the council to think about that. I know you have authorized your staff to proceed with drafting an ordinance as such, but I think we all should work together in coming to something in the best interests of Titusville. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I wouldn't go away necessarily. Hold on one second. We have a couple lights. Member Jordan? Okay. Member Nelson?
Thank you. I was, I was the councilperson, went to Tampa, unfortunately, at some ungodly hour on Friday morning, but that's okay. They were great to us. They gave us copies of everything they had. So we have a copy of their ordinances. I think part of the problem that Dwight was talking about is that they had a staff member who was drafting an ordinance, or a series of ordinances, and that person got sick. And these people sort of got impatient and took the ball and ran with it, and it was not satisfactory. So I'm not real sure, and I didn't come out of there with a clear idea of how to get this started. And maybe Ms. Busaka, who's sitting back there, has some ideas on how to get this started. But I would agree with Mr. Severs that this is something we need to do. What they're looking at is they are considering the canopy.
Mr. Severs, if you will, please, I have a question for you, sir.
You have a question?
Don't go, don't go.
If I should sit down, I will.
Well, see, that way, if I get something wrong, you can stop me. Okay. What they're doing is they're looking at the canopy, and their goal is not to lose any canopy in the city. So they're writing their ordinances with the idea of increasing the tree canopy where they can, and at least not losing it. So it seemed to be very comprehensive. It was very long. I didn't count how many pages their ordinance was, but it seemed to be very, very well thought out. So maybe Ms. Busaka can tell us how to start this.
Well, before we do that, could you be specific on your petition? Because I heard a lot of information. I'm not sure exactly.
Petition respectfully suggesting that you consider directing your staff in cooperation with members of the community, sit down together on this issue. That's my petition.
There was a lot of information there. I didn't know what else you wanted in there. Ms. Busaka, are you, can you give us an opinion on this? How to get, if council desires to do this, how they would?
I've had the opportunity to do that twice in my life. And both times, the elected officials appointed people so that they knew that these were a balanced group. One time, the group worked on consensus only, and the other time, it worked on voting. And the trick about working on the voting was that a group of people who were in attendance at one meeting and missed the next meeting would come back and revote on something. In both cases, those meetings took several years. So I think that if you would like to do this as a group, just be prepared for the fact that it is a very staff-intensive and time-intensive. But at the end, you typically have come to something that the community representatives have agreed to. It is a, but it is a lot of time and effort. What the staff had intended at this time is, during the last time that this was discussed by council, you gave us some informal direction. And we have that list, and it was our intent to come back to you with options about that, so that you could tell us if this is the ordinance that you wanted to move forward into public discussion. But if you would rather work from the ground up with the public, staff is delighted to do that. We are down one staff member, as you know. So I can't promise you that this is going to be quick, but we will do the best we can with the staff we have.
From what I'm hearing, you were already given instructions to proceed and come back?
We have ideas that each council person said these are the things we're interested in. And we are using those as our guidelines for ways to craft an ordinance that you could look at. Now, some of what was heard in Tampa is that the city of Tampa, who's been doing this for decades, actually review their landscaping every five years. They have many full-time staff members, a full-time forester, several full-time arborists. The city doesn't even currently have an arborist. So this was, this would take more expertise than our current staff has. And I would think that there would be, members of the community, that it would probably be helpful in putting that kind of information together. But again, I think it depends on how quickly you want to move because the public process can take some time. And I believe that's what they told you at the city as well.
As I recall, an arborist, getting an arborist was discussed at the workshop, and it was a...
It's on budget.
It's on our budget list right now.
It'll be there, so. See some lights here. Member Nelson?
Just as an aside, the gentleman that spoke at the workshop suggested we go for an urban forester because he said that person can act as an arborist, but they also look at the comprehensive plan. But one of the things they said to us was, when they, they worked on this for, I think, this is their 14th year of working on this, and they said it was processed. So I don't think we're expecting anything super fast. But I think it's a goal to work toward. The nice thing is, we do have copies of their ordinances, so we know what they've done, and we can plagiarize, which is nicer than trying to start from scratch. You don't like to plagiarize? We have permission. We have permission from Tampa to plagiarize. But what they had said was they went ahead and did some sort of stop-gap measures along the way while they were working on this long-term plan. So, I mean, I guess, I guess when I look at our city, I look at it and go, I want to look like Winter Park. I don't want to look like Miami. So to me, that's a goal. I think right now, we look more like Winter Park than Miami. And I just want to make sure we continue to look like Winter Park or one of the nicer communities, have trees in them, as opposed to something that looks like, I guess I shouldn't pick on Miami. I'll pick on New York.
Hey, wait a minute.
Every time I go to New York, it's total concrete, other than Central Park.
Or Long Island.
Well, Long Island, but I'm talking Manhattan.
That's New York.
Well, yeah, but Long Island doesn't really count.
You're talking about New York City.
I'm thinking about New York City, Manhattan.
Okay.
Where unless you're in the park, you know, there aren't trees. So I don't want to end up looking like that. I don't think any of us do.
I certainly agree with that. Member Jordan?
Okay, thank you. First of all, I appreciate everyone who went over and did the conference and brought back a lot of information.
Five thirty in the morning.
Five thirty in the morning. We appreciate that. I wasn't going to do that, for sure. But I do not want us to start from scratch. I think we've already done that. We actually had the meeting. We discussed what we wanted. And I don't think anybody who's loved trees want to wait 14 years to get something done because if we're going to wait on us to develop something, that means we're going to continue with what we have, correct? So if we continue with what we have in the next 14 years, then you're going to find that your canopy is maybe gone. And you don't want it gone. So my suggestion is for us to continue on the past, that we've already started. I think we had the meeting, we listened to the public, we came up with some ideas to give to staff. Staff's going to come back and tell us this is what we've developed so far. And the next step is, we're going to get the public involved in this thing to hone into exactly what we want. We're going to vote on it, and we're going to go about our business. And it's not going to take 14 years, in my opinion. I know I won't be on council in 14 years, and I'd like to have a tree to sit under after I'm gone, for sure. So that's my suggestion. Starting with someone with Tampa, which is a larger city than we are, for sure. And they've got a lot more money than we have. And yeah, it'd be nice to have an arborist, the guy who came to our meeting. Simon, loved the way he talked, for sure. He got a lot of information, for sure, and I'm sure he's going to be part of whatever we come up with, for sure. So that's the way I think we should go right now with that, and go forward as quickly as possible. Thanks.
Okay, Member Stokel?
Thank you. I'm wondering if we could come to a compromise and do this stop-gap idea where we could involve the public? Because I do think, as Peggy mentioned, like, I think that there are some citizens that this may be their area of expertise. It's certainly not mine. I can tell you that. And so just watching how much growth and development we are doing in the city of Titusville makes me very excited, but also a little cautious when you start seeing the clearcutting in the trees. And I would like to bring in as much information as we can to make sure that we are very proactive in our approach. So I agree with Member Jordan, where, you know, I want to get something quick to make sure that as these new developments are coming up, we're not going to look back and be hindsight's 2020 at that point. But to Member Nelson, I really like what you said and what Mr. Severs brought up, like involving, you know, the Environmental Commission, pulling in different people, that this is their area, and they may have some insight to offer us when we do have limited staff, unfortunately, at this time. So I don't know if that's a possibility to incorporate both of those? I don't know what that would look like. Peggy?
Why don't you let staff see what we can do? I think that we could come back with some quick wins. My guess would be that that would be largely in the clearing arena rather than the tree canopy arena because that would, might take some additional study. Where I, for instance, right now, we're dealing with a gentleman who is being required to do a tree survey for everything above six inches. And he said, "Why, when I only mitigate things from 20 inches and above?" So we're requiring a tree survey, but then we're saying you don't have to mitigate for them once you take them out.
Gotcha.
So I think that if we could, we could probably look at some quick wins and see if we can't get those, because I do believe that what I've heard the most concern about is the removal of trees. And then the long terms would be perhaps looking at a urban forestry program. That would take a little more. So let us work on that, and we will come back to you with at least a plan for you to discuss. And when we had come, our thought was that we would come to you with, as I said, some options so that we'd know how to move forward with an ordinance. So let us come to you back with you with some short-term options and some long-term options. And of course, once council tells us the general direction that they're ready to go, we can always hold workshops with the public to assist us in fine-tuning some of that.
Okay, thank you.
Member Nelson?
That would be good. I appreciate it, Peggy. But I just wanted to let Mr. Jordan know, the actual writing of the ordinances took two years. But there were times, the staff member had some family issues, and so she was out a lot. So that was part of that lag. I think she was ill for like six months, eight months, out of that time. So it took them two years. But a lot of that was, you know, just because of illness.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I think, I want to reiterate kind of what you're saying, and that is that we've already started. And you're kind of going to lead the show and come back to us. Because if we get this spread out too much, you know, and a lot of things that I've done in the past, we have committees, you know? Some people say, "Let's get something done," and some people says, "That committee." I think that what I'd like to do is just have you guys go forward and come back to us. I thought that the tree workshop was outstanding. And when we talk up here about we need to get some of the community experts, I think the community experts were there. The people who were, you know, still wanting to talk to us after we left, those are the ones who know what they're talking about. And so, again, I don't want to keep starting over every time somebody has a new idea because then we, you know, somebody said something about 40 years or something. But let's just keep going forward and have a point person. And I think staff has to be the point and come back to us, and let's move forward.
Well, I agree with what you have said at this point. And it seems to be a consensus to let staff go ahead. So I don't think we need a vote on that. You've already received those instructions, and there is a consensus from council. Thank you, Ms. Busaka. Anyone else? Petitions and requests?
Good evening. My name is Jean Miller, 28, 14, morning of the way here in Titusville, a longtime resident since 1985, when I built my home in Winova Farms. I'm here to talk about the assisted living facility that I am working on. I'm a very new developer, my first-time adventure of this magnitude. And I know the risks involved, the time it takes, and I know the money that I've put into it, a large portion of my, and I know that there's a chance I could lose it. But I feel passionate about this facility, personal reasons as well as community. My husband and I have always been the kind to give back to the community whatever way we could. Now, so to honor him is one of the driving forces behind my doing this with my assistance. I believe that the rewards of an assistant ALF would be benefit to our families, future families, providing jobs, revenue to the city, and outweighs the risks that I'm willing to take. It's been a long two, 12 to 14 months, preparation, learning, visiting ALFs, finding out the day-to-day operations and the levels of care that we could provide to our families and future people that will need these cares. I must say, it's been a wide range of emotions. I have had overwhelming, I've been scared, I've been happy, I've been excited. But I am in it for the long run. I want to see it go. I don't regret one minute that I had put into this with my associates, and I would do it all again if I had to. do it all again if I had to. Now, on a personal note, the driving force, my strength, the will to do this, is my mom. In 1990, my mom, living with my sister, needed her more care than we could give her. We had to put her in a nursing home. She didn't want to go, and that was heartbreaking. She shared a room with a total stranger, another woman she didn't know. They had a curtain dividing their bedroom. She had a TV, a nightstand, little dresser for her belongings, which were very few, shared a bathroom, and she was not happy. And all this at the cost of $5,000 a month, just for her, her share of the room. Now, for a woman like my mom, she came from England as a 19-year-old bride, with my dad, raised seven children on her own in a home. And to be unhappy like she was when we had to put her in is just heartbreaking. It was too much for her.
Ma'am, your time is up, ma'am.
Okay.
So...
I would like to continue and have my contractor go into further what we have done in the past year and why we're here tonight.
Okay. Could you be specific on your petition, what you're trying to accomplish?
We're trying to get an extension.
Okay. Well, that's not generally...
And that would be up to, my engineer would like to talk about that.
Okay. Why don't we do that, then? Would you like to come up?
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, I thought you...
How's it going?
Please be as brief as possible, sir.
Absolutely. My name's Clayton Hume, 3930 Ramon Acres Drive, Titusville. I'm a certified general contractor and a realtor, American Eco Systems Contracting. Been working on this deal with Danny prior to, and Ms. Miller bought the development to develop it into an assisted living facility, and we're just trying to get the CUP extended for two more years. We now have an executed contract.
I have to stop you, sir, because I still don't understand why this is under petitions and requests. Can you give Mr., having been a member of staff, maybe he can explain it a little better?
Woody Rice, 505 Indian River Avenue. This is the Rio Lago, Mr. Tretter's CUP, you know, the site that we're talking about. And the problem is, and the good news is, the CUP has not expired yet. She has till April the 8th of 2020, before the, sorry. The problem is with CUPs, it's basically, CUPs are conditional use permits. So, if I had a building that was existing, but I needed a CUP, and you guys voted on it and everything, then I could move right into that building and do that. Well, this project's a little different. It's vacant land. The CUP has a height attachment to it, okay? It's a 10-story unit. It can't be built in a short time period. It's 18 months probably of construction that we're talking about. And the problem is with the language. You all have been very gracious in the past with Mr. Tretter, with extending the CUP and all that. But the problem is the timeframes. And what it says in the ordinance is the conditional use commences within four years of date that the permit is approved, as evidence, and this is the key part, as evidenced by a receipt, a certificate of occupancy, a certificate of completion, and/or a business tax receipt. We can only get that once construction is done. Either you get your CO, a completion, or you get your BTR to operate your facility. The problem is, this takes 18 months to build. So, to ask her to take a risk, that we pull our permits, we get everything done by the deadline, and she's in the middle of construction, and all of a sudden, the CUP is no longer good, I mean, what do you do in that case? Are you going to stop construction, saying, "I'm sorry, your CUP is no longer good. You can't do what you've already invested in, or what you've already built?" So, the origins aren't comparable with the CUP that's just a single story, maybe already built, and you go in there and you run and you do that. And those requirements are great. So, what we're asking for is to change the requirements that satisfies the CUP, not extend the CUP at all. We're saying, add something like, you know, that if you have site plan approval and building plan approval, that your CUP, this is the evidence that your CUP is good. And that's what we need, so she can get into construction and not have this thing expire on her. And that's why we're here tonight.
But this is unusual. I've never heard of anything like this coming under petitions and requests. Don't we have a process where we normally go through these?
This is the only process I know to come in and ask for a request to change an ordinance.
We, correct. I don't believe they're asking for anything specific to their project. They're asking council to give advisability to staff to look at the CUP code, to see if changes can be made to the code to address the length or CUP process. In this case, they're saying, "We'd like, you know, to be able to qualify and have your CPA, CUP extended, as long as construction's commenced, you pulled permits." They're looking for a change to that code, and they're asking for advisability on that.
So, you're just asking for an advisability. You're not asking for the action to be done.
That's correct, because it does take an ordinance change.
That's where I didn't hear that coming from anybody else.
It's just an ordinance change is what we're asking for, saying that you've said the evidence that you satisfy the CUP requirements when you're in construction, is that you have site plan approval and building plan approval, and that's what we're asking. And the deadline is still April the 8th, 2020. That's still the deadline. If we don't have those things done by then, you know, we lose our CUP. We understand that.
Okay. I don't have any problem asking for an advisability. I just wasn't prepared to make a specific event happen without going through the normal processes. So, I will leave it up, we have another line. Thank you. Member Stokel?
This might be a question for Peggy, but just to Woody's point, I understand his frustration. My, I'm going back and I'm remembering this extension and everything. I just don't want to address something if we don't have an issue. My concern would be is, I think when we granted that extension, I think it was two years. So, I feel like the process normally would be fine, because by that time, the project should be complete. So, I'm almost wondering if an extension would be better, like a two-year extension versus changing, because then at that point, my concern would be, somebody started a project, and we don't know if they're going to finish in two years, if they're going to finish in five years. That would be my only hesitation, just from the little bit that I heard so far. So, I don't know, Peggy, if you've seen any. I don't know.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Have you seen this happen before, where, I guess that would be advisability, what we're looking for, anyway, to see. Would, what Mr. Rice is saying, would it be more beneficial for developers and whatnot to, in the city, to say, "Okay, if you've just started your project, that satisfies"? So, they're not running the risk. I understand the concern here as well for them, but I'm almost thinking that an extension would be more appropriate than changing that.
We have standards by which both site plans and building permits expire. And what you have to do for, what we say right now is that once you have your site plan, then, and you get a building permit, then the building permit standard is what you utilize, so that you continue to make forward progress. And that standard is that there has to be an inspection within six months. And after that inspection, there has to be another inspection, so that we can guarantee that, except under the most unusual circumstances, that it, that development progresses.
Right.
So, even though the language in the code currently is written as it is, I think that there's an argument that once some, a permit has been issued, that that person has a right to maintain that site plan, that building permit.
Right.
I don't know that this site plan has been approved. Mr. Rice would have to tell us what that was. But that's the way that we typically operate. Once a permit has been issued, you are allowed to continue until that permit is either finalized, or it dies for lack of moving forward.
Okay.
I'm probably at 75% design at this point.
Okay.
Okay. So, I have not, I've submitted a pre-app, is all I've done. I have not submitted the full set of plans yet. So, that's why I'm at. But the thing that Ms. Miller, Mr. Tretter, when we asked for the extension several years ago, in 2018, I think it was February of 2018, at that time, I thought, you know, he's moving forward.
Right.
Great. Let's go. Well, he sold the property.
Okay.
Ms. Miller is a first-time developer. She then found out that she really didn't qualify for financing, being a first-time developer on a 10-story building. Okay? So, she's been looking for someone to invest and help her, and she has now got that. Okay? She has a contract where someone's going to come in and help her. That took some time. She's actually had three different developers look at it, and they tell me, "Woody, slow down. This developer wants to change everything. This developer wants to..." So, I slowed down, not to spend her money unwisely in design, until she had the commitment. And now that she has the commitment, you know, we're ready to go full steam ahead.
Okay.
But I was uncomfortable in guiding her and saying, "Well, you know, here's what the code says. It literally says that your CUP expires if you don't have CO or BTR or something like that." Someone's not going to invest millions of dollars in a project thinking that that could...
Could potentially stop.
Potentially put the project at risk. And that's why I said, "You know, best thing for us to do is go to city council and share with them what our concerns are, and see if they can do, you know, advisability to change that one thing in the code." And I extend the CUP, just change the qualifier for the CUP.
Do you have, would you have an issue if we went with the extension versus changing the code? Or would that...
I don't know what the long-term effects. I think Peggy would have to ask whether CUPs are out there, that if you extended it, and that's the one thing I was looking at, I, do you really want to do that, or do you not want to do that? Is that a larger impact than just saying, "Hey, the qualifier's here"?
Right.
And just to touch a little bit on site plan approval, site plans, once approved, they're only good for one year. Ms. Basaka is exactly correct with the building permits. Once you pull your building permit, you have to have an inspection once every six months to keep that permit going.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, that's just what the current code says in that regard.
I'm okay with the advisability. That's just my initial concern, just moving forward.
Okay.
Member Jordan?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the advisability. I think we should just ask staff to give us information, just come back with us, and let's get it done.
I agree.
Okay?
I agree. I agree.
Okay. We have...
Back up.
Okay.
I was...
Ms. Basaka, you have your marching orders. I didn't want to say that. Thank you, ma'am. Sir, I'm going to ask you, it's not absolutely necessary. We have a very unusual situation going on right now, and I'm trying to think of...
I just want to add one thing for one minute.
Make it very brief, please.
Okay. Just that we did complete the shoreline restoration already, so that permit's been opened and closed out. So, there has been progress.
Okay, great. Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to ask for you to help me with a situation. We have a gentleman that is coming. He's under consent agenda, item B. He's only here to receive a plaque, and he has all the kids out there that are really...
I have one visitor who's in charge.
Certainly, if council would like to...
I'm trying to help you here.
Sure. If council would like to vote to take that item now, we can certainly do that, and then we can resume petitions and requests.
Okay, council?
Can I?
Motion?
Yeah, move.
I have a second. I have a second from Member Stokel. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Pass unanimously. If you get everybody back in here, we'll get you out of here.
You can hear them. To the right.
The poor man's been sitting there, and it's...
I felt, yeah. That was terrible. I wasn't sure why they were here.
Sorry. It's really our bedtime.
No, no, we understand. I want to apologize to all of you. Usually, petitions and requests does not go that long, and we, and this is, yours is under consent agenda, so it would go fairly quickly there, too. But would you, City Manager, would you...
Yes, sir. Resolution 45-2019 of the City of Titusville, recognizing the kindness all-around symbols as the official symbol of kindness for the City of Titusville. The resolution we presented by, we presented to students for the, following their approval. Now, we'll need to approve the resolution, sir, before you present it.
Okay, move to, well, I think we need to approve it first.
We got to approve it first.
Move to approve resolution number 45-2019.
Second. I have a motion. I have a second. All those who, any, any...
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. How about we do this?
Go right there beside the mayor. Go right beside the mayor.
Here we go. All right. Are we all in the picture?
Okay.
Okay, whatever. Come on. You guys got to get in here.
I want one with the kids, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm only a big kid, anyway.
There's that. Now, you guys get back to work.
Come on.
Yes, can the kids hold it?
Yeah, sure. Who's good at holding things?
I am.
All right, easy now. Here, you, just like that. There you go.
There we go.
There you go.
Can we see Wakefield?
Here, just get the kids...
Can you see everybody?
Okay.
Damn.
There we go.
I already have 20.
All right.
I don't want you to get too slow.
Okay.
All right, baby? Okay, great.
Well, thank you very much, and again, apologize.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Okay.
Bedtime.
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 Ice cream.
Okay.
At bedtime.
Bedtime.
All right. I see a light here, but you don't, that's from before.
That's good.
All right. We'll go back to petitions and requests. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak, sir?
Mayor, council members.
Sir, your name and address for the...
Al Ortiz, 3444 Zaharis.
Thank you, sir.
I've been a resident at Zaharis place for over a year now, and I've been a Titusville member for approximately five years. We moved into Zaharis over there, and I've been trying to work with the city, trying to get the road repaved or what have you. Every time I do, it seems like I'm stumbling across, you know, the budget or what have you. So, I'm proposing that if we can possibly get some kind of budget for repaving within Zaharis and also Zarizen Road, and I have some pictures I'd like to present to you guys, so...
Welcome to do that. Just bring them up to me, sir.
There you go. Those are photos of the, of the road and what it looks like with the potholes. They've been repaving it and trying to do what they can with what they have out there. They don't have the proper equipment to do it correctly. They have a lot of places that they did try to correct it, and if you could see that, it's just putting a Band-Aid on something that really needs to be resurfaced. We went by Pinecrest and Park, and they did a real nice job on the roads over there. And that's what we're asking as members of the community as well. So, I would like that to be somewhat put forth and part of the budget. I've been working with Virginia Blalock, and she's been calling folks for me, trying to help out. And they've been bringing equipment over and trying to patch up the roads, but it's just looking like that. And I don't know. I'm trying to make the community better. I'm taking care of the island in the middle, and just trying to make it look better. So, I ask for the council to...
We hear you, sir. We understand. I'm going to ask the city manager if there is anything we can do, because it's not an easy thing.
I understand that.
There's limited budget, and we have so many miles of roads, and it's scheduled over a certain period of time. We're doing about six a year. Sometimes we do more, sometimes we do a little less.
Right.
And everything is scheduled. And if we start moving them around...
Well, I understand that.
It becomes a problem. So, I'll just ask the city manager if he can look into this, or...
Absolutely, sir.
Okay.
That'll be fantastic. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
You want to keep them pictures, or?
If you'd like to take them, you can take them. I think you made your point with them.
And this is what I planned to speak to you tonight. As you know, I've sent you an email August the 19th, and I'm seeking facts and the truth. The subject of the email is request for the council to terminate our city manager, Mr. Larisse. And I have two reasons for that, two special reasons. And one is regards as nonsense, deception, dishonesty, lack of common sense. I'm reading from record.
Sir, you've done this three times now. Do you remember that, or do you understand that?
You're taking my time.
I'm pointing out that you're taking our time, frankly. Go ahead.
Okay, can I back up the clock?
Go ahead.
All right. Nonsense, deception, dishonesty, lack of common sense, deliberate fraud, and by his own distorted logic that opposes and disputes the simple fact that water flows downhill. And I said, "Mr. Larisse..." And I'm just reading this from the record. "Mr. Larisse's opposition to and refusal to support the necessity of this maintenance conflicts with the following: one, logic and common sense; two, city's stormwater master plan," page 72... No, it's page 7-2. "A petition of over 100 residents of our community, including council members Dan Diesel and Robert Jordan; four, the design of engineers of large box scovages 195; and five, the fact that water flows downhill." I know, it's funny for Mr. Jordan, but it's... Yeah, it's funny. Okay. Now, the second thing is has to do with fraud. I don't think that's funny. I've been... Anyhow, this is the apple here. It has to do with, you know, water flows downhill, so does gravity, law of gravity. This has to do with, you know, Newton dropped a body. So I'm thinking about... I leave this here, because water does flow downhill. That's something that even God says. He has gravity, law of gravity. Anyhow, Mr. Larisse's fraud is something I recorded in an affidavit, and although Mr. Jordan thinks it's funny, I made three formal records for... Records request for city clerk to locate this report and information that disproves everything I've been saying. The city records clerk has not found this imaginary report that was reported on February the 12th and other information. The contract, the report, $70,000 was never spent. That didn't happen. The independent engineering organization does not exist. So Mr. Larisse is guilty of deliberate outrageous fraud with intent to harm me and others. I therefore request city council to terminate his employment for cause. Thank you.
I see two lights, but I really advise, I'm going to do two things. One is, I'm going to point out that this gentleman has said things like this. He's reading the record that he made, because he stood up there and did that. So that's kind of circular thinking there somehow. He has, over the years, filled up loose leaf books with emails to staff using staff time and our time, and this is one example of seven books, I think, that we have. This one is from March of this year to present. You see how big this is? And we get them in the middle of the night sometimes, and quite frequently, frankly. So when I... When council exhibits exasperation, I want everybody to understand it, especially the folks at home. Second thing I'd like to do is have a vote of confidence for the city manager, as we have done before, to show Mr. Johnston that our feelings do not coincide with him whatsoever. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Now, anybody would like to say anything?
I'd like to say something.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir, yes.
And I ask for your indulgence, because I thought about this a long time, because Stan Johnson... Johnston has come up... Don't worry, I know the difference. Has come up here many, many times, and I went and I looked at all the notes that I got since I've been on council, and it turns out that I've gotten 68 emails from Stan basically saying the same thing. And it turns out that every time he asks a question, and if you answer that question, he puts that into another letter that causes one to say, "Well, if you answer his question, then it's only going to allow him to ask more questions, and you just have this circular thing going on." So in response to him asking for the termination of our city manager, I wrote a few things down that I want for the record, so the citizens understand where we are with our city manager. Scott Larisse is an individual who is a servant leader and who helps guide the city through new and exciting times. Scott is a visionary, yet practical and hardworking. He has the ability to make tough decisions about the city's future, while at the same time, he embraces his history and diverse communities. Scott Larisse has the skill and experience in addressing budget issues, organizational staff concerns, and the overall well-being of his city industry. Our city manager is the one that builds trust and has unified his team to carry out the needs of our community. As said in policies initiated by this elected body that represents the people, our city manager has positive working relationship with our partners and stakeholders and has a demonstrated track record of effective staff management. Our city manager role is a difficult one, and with ever-changing economic and political environments, is not for the faint of heart. Our city manager, Mr. Scott Larisse, embodies the highest standards of integrity and trustworthiness as well as experience and professionalism to lead employees and operations with fiscal proficiency, accountability, and transparency. Titusville residents are fortunate to have such a city manager. So no, this council member will not vote to terminate Mr. Larisse as our city manager, and yes, I disagree wholeheartedly with everything this citizen has said and has done to bring him down. And I want to say publicly to Stan Johnston, shame on you.
Shame on you.
Thank you, sir.
Well said, Member Jordan. You actually had your light up before I took off, so...
All right, thank you for that. Yeah, just so you know, because I was going to do one of two things. I was going to make the vote of confidence motion, or I was going to ask Stan if he doesn't remember, just a couple months ago, we had a vote of confidence for city manager, and you were going to ask for him to be removed again. I think it's a personal vendetta with you, which quite honestly seems to have a lot going on with you. And you hand these out quite often, and as a rotarian myself, it's a little disheartening that we get these from you on a regular basis. And you and I have talked a little bit about number three, when it says, "Will it build goodwill and better friendships?" Well, clearly, when you stand up there and say the things you say about people, you're not building goodwill with anybody. So I will simply leave it at that. I won't go into a long... I don't think it's worthy of that, but I will say there's a vote of confidence, a repeated vote of confidence, and I don't think that when you stand up there and say the things you say, you're building goodwill with anybody, and you're certainly not going to move any issues you have forward with that sort of attitude.
Member Stokel.
I want to thank Member Jordan for writing out what I feel in my heart, quite honestly, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that. And I think sometimes, I know for me personally, I get so caught up in just doing city business that I forget to thank people publicly and personally, and so I just want to say that now to our city manager, Scott, that we are very, very blessed to have you. And anytime I'm out in the public and people have good things to say about Titusville and the growth that we're experiencing, it's because of those tough decisions that you've had to make for what would be best for our city. And I'm always bringing it back to you, because you make our jobs a heck of a lot easier, I feel like, up here with the new practices that you do, the professional development you do with the staff. I think the call is that we do with the staff, and I just appreciate you so much. Yeah, that's all I want to say.
And I think we all feel like that. Did you have your light on? I'm sorry. I punched...
No, I made a motion.
Okay.
I failed to say one other thing. And I forgot, but that's... What really got me riled was Mr. Johnston sent me an email, and it was specifically for me only. And it basically reads, "You have taken the position to hide cities' errors and deceptions. You have taken the position to glorify a shyster, Mr. Larisse. Do you still have a conscience? The two of you may go down together with some other shysters." And then he said, "At the upcoming council meeting of September," and he left it blank, "I will request that you relinquish your council seat for cause. The cause for my request of your voluntary termination regards your nonsense, deception, dishonesty, lack of common sense, support and enabling of fraud by our city manager, and your distorted logic that opposes and disputes engineering principles and the simple fact that water flows downhill." And I'm going to tell you something. You know, I don't care what anybody say about me, I will tell you, I am one smart guy. And when someone tells me that I am dishonest and I'm deceptive and all this, because I don't know what he's talking to. The problem that I'm having with all of this is that Stan is supposed to be a brother in the Lord, and Stan should know better. And it's embarrassing when Stan continues to come up here and denigrate the people who are trying to be servants, who are not getting paid that much money, to do this and have to listen to him day in and day out, and he's just going around in a circle. He does not want an answer, he just wants to argue. And to me, that constitute a bully. And in my mind, this letter that he sent me was extortion. If I don't terminate the city manager, then I'm going to come after you in September. Well, my character, I will tell you, I rather fight than switch, and no one is going to stop me for doing the job that I believe that I've been led to do on this city council. So you should be embarrassed for yourself, Sarah, and I wish you... I wish you would certainly think about what you're doing and change your course.
Don't do it again.
Just change your course.
You're disrupting the meeting. You are not recognized, he is.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll make one other statement. In normal circumstances, you would be sued for slander. Unfortunately, because we are public figures and the city manager is, there are separate group of rules that take place because we're public figures, so otherwise, you'd probably been sued several times by now. With that, we have a motion on the floor to support our city manager with complete Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And the opposed passes unanimously. Next item. Anybody else from petitions and requests? I see none. Next item, the city manager?
Yes, sir. We have one consent agenda item remaining. Does council wish to pull consent agenda item 8A?
No.
Clerk, are there any cards for 8A? I will read consent agenda item A for the record. Approve the attached budget amendment and change order two in the amount of $90,137.27 to contract 18B045 with Massey Corporation of Port Orange, Florida, for the construction of the southern service area main water loop, and authorize the mayor to execute the change order.
Okay, we have only one consent agenda item, and we'll just take a vote on the consent agenda. Let's... I usually do a roll call, I don't have to do it on this one. All those in favor say yes.
We have a motion. I move.
I'm sorry.
I'll second.
A motion, a second. Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And the opposed? Not hearing any, passes unanimously. Next item, sir.
Yes, sir. Item 9A. This is a transmittal hearing, not the final adoption. The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning agency, recommended transmittal of the amendments to the state land planning agency for review. Planning and zoning approved the motion that the commission receive a report within 60 days indicating the plans for reclaimed water to Wellfield Area 2. On May 28, 2019, at a request of a citizen, the city council approved advisability to review and clarify the city's comprehensive plan regarding that new developments located in the area of critical concern be required to connect to reclaimed water systems or provide dry lines. The proposed language of this change requires that new developments within the area of critical concern to connect to reclaimed water when service is available or provide dry lines consistent with the provisions of the Code of Ordinances. It should be noted that is staff's intention to propose amendments to Chapter 21 to be considered during the comprehensive plan amendment adoption process that would provide flexibility for council in the event that reclaimed water will not be available to this site. Ms. Bisaka is available to answer any questions that you may have about this transmittal, as well as Mr. Stoffler, our Water Resources Director.
Do you have any comments before we...
Only if you have questions.
Okay. Are there any questions? I see none. Council has no questions on it. We'll open a public hearing. Clerk, are there cards on this item?
Yes, sir. Two cards. The first is Dwight Severs.
Ms. Severs? Name and address for the record, sir.
Name and address? Dwight Severs, 1308 Riverside Drive, Titusville, Florida. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you. Member Jordan, I agree with you. I don't like labels. I personally don't like to be labeled. My integrity and ethics are very important to me. It's my understanding that certain people are telling you, the council, that I am anti-development. I know in these days and times, it's convenient to label people and perhaps turn people off to whatever a person has to say. I think that's truly unfortunate. As a short member on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I was the one that made the motion to approve the Park Avenue PD, the Riverwalk apartment complex, Mr. Rice's downtown 30 units per acre project. I was the only one in P&amp;Z that was ready to move forward with Mr. Fisher's project, which is on your agenda as well. I honestly do not believe that it's anti-development to expect the comprehensive plan to be followed. I do not believe it's anti-development to believe that permits should be issued in accordance with the Code of Ordinances, and I don't think it's anti-development to advocate for the water supply of the city for all citizens. I don't think that's anti-development either. On this particular item, I'm the one that made the motion to recommend transmittal. I sent to you a... Realizing the three-minute time period correspondence, I assume you all have received that, had an opportunity to read it. Obviously, I'm not going to read it as such, and as I indicated in my correspondence, that I defer to the city attorney's office, who is asking you that there be some flexibility as such in the future on this issue of dry lines. In good faith, I likewise would expect, and I have given you eight grounds or reasons, I believe are all true and accurate, why you should try to push forward to having reclaimed water lines extended into the area to Wellfield. I think they're supported by science, your consultants, your CUP permits, et cetera. And finally, I don't think staff really resist that, because in response to one of the questions raised in our 2040 review, and I'll try to wrap up if I could. Can I?
Go right ahead.
I suggested in... To require staff within the next two years to evaluate a program to extend reclaimed water system to the Area 2 Wellfield area of critical concern and action to implement said plan. That was my suggested language in the new comprehensive plan. Their response was, "I support the following change: require staff to evaluate a program to extend, expand the reclaimed water line to the north and south area of critical concern and create an action..." And as I indicated in my correspondence, that I defer to the city attorney's office, who is asking you that there be some flexibility as such in the future on this issue of dry lines. In good faith, I likewise would expect, and I have given you eight grounds or reasons, I believe are all true and accurate, why you should try to push forward to having reclaimed water lines extended into the area to Wellfield. I think they're supported by science, your consultants, your CUP permits, et cetera. And finally, I don't think staff really resist that because in response to one of the questions raised in our 2040 review, and I'll try to wrap up if I could. Can I?
Go right ahead.
I suggested in to require staff within the next two years to evaluate a program to extend reclaimed water system to the Area 2 Wellfield area of critical concern and action to implement said plan. That was my suggested language in the new comprehensive plan. Their response was, "I support the following change. Require staff to evaluate a program to extend, expand the reclaimed water line to the north and south area of critical concern and create an action to implement such a plan." I just think it is a priority that as a part of this transmittal, that there be some action taken to see that how reclaimed water lines can be extended into the Area 2 Wellfield. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Member Jordan?
Yes. Thank you. I did read your document for sure. It was very well written.
Thank you, sir.
Anyway.
I spent a lot of time on it, as you could tell.
First thing I saw, I underlined a few things that caught my interest. But one of the things you, and I'm not sure what you meant by it, so I need to ask you. You said, "I've been told that staff feels some pressure to approve development because we have a pro-development council."
Yes, sir.
And it's true. We are pro-development council, you know. I think we try to do the smart thing. You know, we want smart growth and everything.
I do too. Want growth.
I wasn't sure why you put that in there. Was it a negative or is it a positive?
Well, I think my impression, when I was told that by a staff member, that they felt under pressure.
Okay. Well, sometimes pressure is good.
And I think that's what the person meant by it.
Okay. All right. All right. You know.
It's an individual's opinion. It's not. Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. The other thing that I need to understand, you know, I love reclaimed water. I wish I had reclaimed water in my area because we've got iron in our water and we have a pump. So I would love to have that. But the Brookshire property that we were basically talking about over South Lake, there is no future to put reclaimed water in that area. We just don't have it. And so why would you expect a developer to put lines in? Let me take that, let me change that. Why would you expect the city to put lines in underneath 95 to that property when there is no plan to ever have reclaimed water over there? Why would you want the city to spend millions of dollars to do that?
You can answer that question. He asked you a question.
Thank you. I wouldn't expect the city to spend millions of dollars. I do not think it would require millions of dollars. I would hope the city installed a chaise under 95 when it was expanded, or there'd be other pipes because we all knew that it's going to be expanded. If they did not, then maybe that's one of the reasons why it could not be expanded. But I think it is very important. My comment is not just directed at Brookshire. It is to the Area 2 Wellfield. Because what the consultant is saying, there is a need because of degradation of the Area 2 Wellfield to recharge it. So I don't know what the plan would say. Maybe it would say they'd never be extended that direction. If that's what it says, and that you as council members, that's why you get the big bucks to make those decisions? Fine. But I think it ought to be looked at, and it has not been looked at for years. It should be.
Okay.
I don't see, does anyone in council disagree with me about that?
Well, let me ask some other questions. I don't want to answer your question. When it comes down, you said something about there's a need for us to bring those lines in because it's a degradation of the Wellfields. So I need an answer from this side to tell me, is there a need for us to bring these lines in? Is that something that you see in the future that we need?
You know, I definitely agree with Dwight that bringing reclaimed into the area of critical concern will help the Wellfield.
Right.
I will tell you that currently, the Area 2 Wellfield is approved for 3 million gallons a day in accordance with the consumptive use permit. At this point, we're withdrawing approximately 1 million gallons a day. And so, but that's part of the reason why we build Area 4, the future water. One of the goals was to move the consumption north to Area 4 and rest the Area 2 and 3 Wellfield. And we're currently doing that at this time. We are easily supplying the water that the city needs with the 3 Wellfields at this point.
Okay. One of the statements he has on here, he says, "Currently, about one quarter of the wells are not actively used due primarily to water quality degradation." Tell me about that.
I'm quoting St. John's permit. These are not my words.
No, I'm asking.
There are a number of wells within the Area 2 Wellfield that are no longer active. I would like to provide the context that many of those wells are over 50 years old, and there are a variety of reasons why we can no longer use them. Some of them are from saltwater intrusion. Some of them are from dry cleaning spills that happened back in the '60s. Some are from old gas tanks that leaked from gas stations from many, many years ago that are now no longer visible. They're gone, been redeveloped. Some we have lost to access issues. So there are a variety of reasons why a number of those wells, some just quit pumping. And that's another reason, too.
All right. So do you have a concern about our water supply for the future?
I think currently, we have sufficient supply. We have upwards of a million gallons available at this point. But I do think that, you know, we are taking this time when we are not relying on Area 2 and 3 as much as we used to to do rehab projects, and those are underway.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Stoffler, if I may. In order to put in the pipes that are required, what would that cost the city? I've heard several numbers used.
I think the only, the current estimate that we had to look to take, expand the pipes to the Brookshire neighborhood was approximately $3 million.
$3 million. And are we guaranteed that we'd be able to use those pipes because of?
At this point, and we did some, we looked at how much reclaimed is available. Currently, we have approximately 1 million gallons a day that is available. Okay? And what I mean by available is it's not being used today. But one of the concerns is that we have a multitude of commitments to future developments. And in particular, we have committed to supply Willow Creek with reclaimed. And so that million gallons, typically that would get you about 1,000 homes for reclaimed. So we are currently overcommitted on that capacity.
Because that area, I think, is, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I've discussed this with you. You talked about the area having already, the area, immediate area up around this project has already grown out. So there's not a lot of new homes coming in to add to the reuse water. Is that correct? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's.
Certainly, certainly as the city grows, our wastewater flows will increase and the availability of that reclaimed will increase. But I think the thing that we need to remember is that it takes three homes of wastewater to provide one home with reclaimed water. So it's not a one-for-one.
And what conclusion do you draw from that?
Is that, you know, that we will be able to extend reclaimed currently to the commitments that we have, and there may be some more in the future. But until we make changes to where we send it or who is available to it, at this point, I think our current capacity has been already committed to future development.
And are these pipes, in order to do what is being asked, what direction do they have to go? Is it toward the I-95 or?
There's probably, there's probably two different ways that we could bring reclaimed to the northern area of critical concern towards those wells. The wells themselves are located on the east side of I-95. And so the rehydration that we talk about, it could be done from the east side and could save those costs associated with going up under I-95.
Okay. So there is an alternate to what we, what has been proposed at this point. Is that correct?
There are many ways that we could look at bringing area into that area.
I can't look at $3 million worth, which is your entire budget for a year, and not be pretty well assured that it's going to be usable. And if there's an alternate way, that's fine.
Yes. And a large portion of that cost is getting under I-95.
Yeah. Which sounds extraordinarily hard to me.
Yes.
If it can be done at all. Any other? Yes, ma'am.
Son, just to make sure I'm understanding. So if the reclaimed lines went north on the east side of 95, that would cut that number down?
Yes.
I would say probably significantly.
Significantly, yes. We could, for the same dollar value, we could provide a significant more amount of reclaimed distribution.
So, but the problem is, we don't have the reclaimed water right now. That it's not committed.
Currently, currently, we are committed to future development. So unless we wanted to come back and look at directing or how, who we consider available to reclaim, that's another way to change this.
Member Jordan?
Just one simple question. When we talk about household, when you say three-to-one, is a household also an apartment, a condo, or is it a house?
I don't know that I've looked at the numbers in that great a detail. I think it was more, this is just a general rule of thumb. That it's not, and the idea is that it's not a one-to-one ratio. You know, that if you build 100 homes into a subdivision, that doesn't mean that you can now have 100 more homes for reclaimed.
Mr. Severs?
Yes, sir.
If you have anything you'd like to say, please do.
Oh, thank you, sir. My interest in this matter is simply the interest, I believe, of the city of Titusville and its water resources. Why in the world am I wasting my time concentrating? I sense a certain amount of hostility in some people's expressions toward me, which concerns me frankly.
Sir, that's not fair. That's a detail that is your vision, not necessarily anything else.
Yes, it is. I readily admit that. I'm here just in the, I believe in the interest of the city. I didn't present a detailed plan whether they had to be on the east side of I-95 or the west side of 95. All I've been advocating for is based upon your reports and your data, there needs to be, you have some degradation of the Area 2 Wellfield. The Area 2 Wellfield, as I have been told in the past, costs you the least per 100, per 1,000 gallons of water. Maybe that's changed over time. Therefore, I see it as important to protect and preserve that resource. And if that means reclaimed water lines, to protect and preserve that in whatever manner you choose, that's your prerogative. I'm just advocating for that. That's all.
Your last statement troubles me. Do you feel we're not treating you fairly?
Everything is fine, sir. Okay?
See? Yes, sir.
I've known a lot of you a long time. I, if someone has a problem with me, whether it's a member of council or a member of staff, I'm man enough.
Sir, I asked you a specific question, and you answered it, sir.
Okay.
It doesn't require anything more.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a whole bunch of lights on, however, at this point. Vice Mayor.
Wait, don't leave. See, we like you.
I tried to.
No, I just wanted to kind of comment on that. I've known you too long to have you feel like that's an issue here. Heck, we coach Little League backing out of the water here.
Yes, sir.
It was way a long time ago. When you came and presented your tree presentation, for lack of a better term, I was very impressed. And what I get out of most what you do, whether I agree, don't agree, whether I'm sitting back and listening and trying to determine, you know, maybe there's some validity, maybe this is where we got to go. But every time you've spoken to me, I feel like there's a passion for how you feel. There's a deep thought process that goes into what you produce. You know, that doesn't mean that, you know, I'm going to jump up and down and say, "Well, he has a passion for that, so that's got to be right." But there's no question in my mind that you care about this city and you care about what you do, and you don't take any of it lightly. So, you know, rest assured, if for some reason my focus looked like my, you know, getting ready to wrestle look, that's not what I was going for. So I just wanted to get that said because that's not the case. I would agree that we are definitely, we, myself, I guess is all I can say. I am pro-growth, but we're looking for controlled growth. I thought the tree presentation, along with the tree workshop, was very important. And your questions and concerns about some things are important. So I'll just leave it at that.
No, sir. Thank you. Oh, wait a minute.
Well, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm really surprised at what you just said. It took me aback because I'm looking at everybody's faces and then I didn't see, I didn't see anything unless my face was looking funny or something. But I'm a firm believer in making sure that, you know, you have a position. I'm trying to make sure I'm going to decide on whatever for the betterment of all the citizens. And I think you have the same thing. So if my face was looking funny or anything, which I don't think it was, I apologize, but, you know, you brought some good points on. You're a grown man, you're a mature man, and I think you can understand, you know, we make some decisions up here, and we got to make sure we get the answers that we want. And if it sounds like we're against what you're doing because you're so passionate, I can't apologize for that because it's certainly not personal. It is totally about making sure we do the right things for the citizens of Titusville. And that's all we want to do.
Yes, sir.
So I apologize if I look funny to you.
Yes, sir.
I do look funny to you?
No, sir. Careful.
Member Stokoe. Are you through, sir?
I'm finished, yeah.
Member Stokoe.
Thank you. Well, I know I always make weird faces, so I will own up to that. But also, I know, Mr. Severs, I think you know I have a great deal of respect for you and appreciate the time that you serve the city of Titusville. And to Member Diesel's point, Vice Mayor Diesel, sorry. Second time's it. I know, I know. That your passion for what you do, for no money whatsoever, you can just tell that you love the city. So I appreciate that. What I do want to go into, I think we had some good discussion about the reclaimed, the lines, how much it cost, all of that. I think to the point, though, is from what I'm seeing, from the suggestion, I'm assuming that this was your motion for this plan to have come back at P&amp;Z? Which I would be open to because I think that you do bring up some valid points. Can we afford certain things? I don't think so at this time. But I would be interested in knowing more about this and seeing what we can do to preserve what we have, to make sure our water is good. So I am open to that discussion and just getting back that report and seeing, okay, if maybe we can't do this, are there some proactive things that we can do to protect ourselves moving forward? So I appreciate your thoughtfulness in this.
Member Nelson?
And I'm just going to say, I appreciate your vast knowledge. As my dad used to say, "You're a smart cookie." So you're a smart cookie.
You see?
That's his favorite saying. Well, and he didn't use it very often, so you're a smart cookie.
I see no other cards. Is there any other comments you would like?
We do have one more card, sir. Sir, we have one more card.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860.7 Avenue. There's some things that are disturbing about what's going on with the Wellfield. And right now, is do we have adequate supply for our future population as expressed in our future comp plan? That question has not been answered yet. And I'm surprised to hear that Willow Creek is overcommitted. I don't know if you all remember what happened with the Great Outdoors. Great Outdoors is supposed to have so much, and they complained that not getting it, not getting it, not getting it. So I don't know what, there was a big suit about that. So I don't know what happened on that. But let me tell you something else you haven't heard about is that when they were doing, when they were doing, city was putting in these wells along Barna Avenue, wow! Ponds went dry, fish died. Even in Indian River City, some of the people's wells went dry. So they stopped pumping some of those wells that they had. And they understand they abandoned some of the wells. This was, seems like the big mistake that city had done. Now, right now, that thing is not very productive, that Wellfield right there. But in 1970, '71, '72, and so forth, in those years, is that when I came, when I came here, is that... I came, when I came here, is that the city of Titusville said, "We have a wellfield, we have a great superficial wellfield where we have it over there near Astronaut and in that area. Six million gallons a day, we expect it's gonna continue producing six million gallons a day." However, in the late seventies, I'm talking to Don Madison, who was in charge of Water Resources, he says, "Oh, my golly, we're having trouble, man. I mean, we're pumping like crazy and we're about to lose water in these water, in our, what do you call it, those storage tanks, those big storage tanks." And he said, "My golly, we almost didn't make it." He said, "During the summer, we almost lost it, and almost lost our pressure." So he had to pump and pump and pump like crazy. What do you think that does to the wells? So some time ago, a few years ago, I brought you an example of one of the wellfields, one of the wells, and what the pumping was like. It was like this and this, and the pollutants went crazy. Right now, in Farmington, you know what's going on? People's ponds are going down. They're saying, "What's going on? What's going on?" So we may have a trouble with Farmington, too. We got, so I want you to listen to him, to Mr. Severs, because what we had planned is we were gonna have our new water treatment plants, and we were gonna put water on areas so that we would recharge our wellfield. Well, we didn't do that. And now we got Brookshire, it's gonna have, people gonna have, they're gonna stick wells in there, and we're not gonna have reclaimed water. So they're gonna pump, pump from our source. And Mr. Stauffer is incorrect about the-
Your time is up, sir.
I'd like to have him turn and tell you about the degradation from the east side.
Your time is up, sir.
Anybody let me, let me tell you about what happened? Okay, you don't wanna hear it.
Okay, any other cards, clerk? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, council discussion. I see none, I'll accept the motion.
I'd move to transmit Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number Three dash twenty nineteen, Infrastructure and Conservation Regarding the Requirement to Connect to Reclaimed Water.
I have a motion and a second. Clerk, can we have a roll, call, vote?
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, passes unanimously. Next item.
Next item is Ordinance's First Reading, Item Ten A, Ordinance Number Twenty-seven, Two Thousand and Nineteen, Relating to Retention in the Area of Critical Concern. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances related to retention in the area of critical concern by amending Chapter Thirty Development Standards, Section Thirty dash two zero seven, Area of Critical Concern Performance, to clarify retention requirements, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date and incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading, the public hearing is at the regular city, scheduled for the regular city council meeting on September tenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six thirty. The Planning and Zoning Commission tabled this item at the regular meeting on Sep-, two September fourth, two thousand and nineteen, five oh. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved a motion for Commissioner Severs to appear before the council to request a representative from Barnes and Furlan Associates to appear before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff is available to answer questions that you may have on this first reading, and we do have cards for this item.
Any comments at this point? Okay. The council, any questions? Anybody has? No? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have cards on this item?
Yes, sir, two cards. The first is Dwight Severs.
Mr. Severs?
For the record, my name is Dwight Severs, Titusville, Florida. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, as the city manager indicated, this matter was scheduled to be heard. It was tabled at the meeting by five zero vote, realizing we had another meeting scheduled for September fourth. At the meeting, there was certainly, planning staff was present, but there was no one from Water Resources present to present this item, to discuss the report. There was no one from Barnes Furlan present to present their report and answer any questions concerning the report as such. I had asked on August fifteenth whether there would be somebody present, and I received a response that Dwight, there will not be a representative of Barnes Furlan at the P&amp;Z. In addition, I inquired as to what the cost was thus far for this report, and you can see on the front page of the report how it's addressed. They said Water Resources has paid three thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-two cents for the report. The Planning and Zoning Commission made a motion to authorize Chairman Williams and his absence, the vice chair, myself, to appear and request council to authorize a representative of Barnes Furlan to appear before Planning and Zoning Commission in order that the Planning and Zoning Commission could properly do its job and review this ordinance change that's been on the books for more than thirty years. That is basically the request of Planning and Zoning Commission. I think it's very important, on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Commission, they have all the information they need to make a proper recommendation to you. And if that means representative of Barnes Furlan be present, there are a lot of questions I will readily admit that I have, a lot of assumptions made, and we need to make sure we have correct, accurate information so that all of us can make an appropriate decision as far as whether there should be or should not be an ordinance change. That is the only reason, I mean, you would not allow myself or others to come here and ask the Barnes Furlan questions before you? And how are we supposed to exercise and do our job unless we have the report, the recommendations appears to solely rely upon Barnes Furlan? And so that's Planning and Zoning Commission's request. Thank you.
I have a question. You are going, there's a cost involved with this. I wanna make sure-
Obviously.
I'm sorry?
Obviously.
Okay. I wanna make sure that there's a good reason behind this. We have engineers on staff that have read that report. Would they not suffice to give you the information you need rather than bring the people back again?
I mean, I respect our own engineers' opinions, but this is a specialty, and I think we need to rely upon the specialists and ask appropriate questions about it.
Okay, but is there anybody on that board that has a particular knowledge of the subject? I mean?
I don't, I don't know, I know what I know. After forty years of experience of hearing the issues presented and the freshwater lens and what affects it wasn't, doesn't affect it. I was involved in drafting the nineteen eighty-six ordinance and the dire riddle report. I'm not saying qualify me as an expert, but there are certain basic fundamental things that are important that I believe there are some issues with.
Okay. Mr. Psachuk or Mr. Stauffer, do you have any comments you'd like to make on this? You've reviewed that, I assume?
Yes, I have. And, you know, upon reviewing the report, it seemed like the conclusions reached by BFA were very clear, and there didn't seem to be any questions that were left. So it was, at that point, you know, we hadn't planned to have BFA present the report because it seemed to be they rendered the opinion and it was a clear conclusion.
Was there a particular reason, you said staff was not at that meeting?
No, there were none.
Was there a particular reason that no one, I don't wanna say no one, but you or whoever wasn't there?
Well, I thought that the report itself answered the question. I think that the, it seems to support it, you know? We thought the question was answered, so we didn't feel that it was necessary to attend.
But you don't feel that city staff, engineers involved with this are sufficient?
I think it would be appropriate for city staff to be there, like any regular city staff item. However, this matter, as you can see from your council, is based upon Barnes Furlan report. That's what it is clear, it says.
Yes, I agree with that.
And I don't wanna be repetitious, but I think there are some questions that need to be asked to make sure that the city is doing the right thing. It may simply be that the language needs to be restructured some based upon the assumptions that Barnes Furlan made. I mean, I'd be glad to sit, I'd be glad to sit down with members of council and talk about it if you would like.
I have a lot of light, so let's see what the rest of council has to say. Member Jordan?
All right, thanks. First question, of course, is this unprecedented for P&amp;Z to ask, to come before us and ask for permission for a consultant?
I can't say it's unprecedented, I can say I haven't seen this happen before.
I'm just wondering, I hope my face looks good. I just wanna make sure. I'm just wondering, you know, Sean, because you have read the report, and the report stands on its own, apparently it was a pretty clear report, why wouldn't it be unwise just to have you or someone from your organization just to go to the next P&amp;Z meeting and answer the questions that they have? I mean, you got a report, and I don't know, you know, are there things in the report that you can't answer that P&amp;Z would ask you? I know you can't-
I'm sure that we would certainly do our best at the P&amp;Z to answer whatever questions that they have.
Okay.
But I will say, I'm certainly not at the same qualifications as BFA, but we can certainly attend and try to address the concerns.
What was the bottom line question that was, they had to answer?
The bottom line, what we're looking at is, it's the idea about where storage of the rainwater is in a development, before the development and after the development. And it's a complex subject, but I'll try to, I'll try to keep it simple. The, what we're looking for, and I think the question certainly that piqued my interest about this was the idea that if, if after construction, you are able to provide enough fill that it gets above twenty-five feet above sea level, and that's where you create your dry pond, if that provides as much recharge as if you created a pond in an area that was at twenty-five feet before the development.
Okay.
Right? So it's the idea of when you move the dirt around, does it somehow inherently, intrinsically change the recharge? And that's why, you know, we definitely got involved, we got interested, because knowing this, and the conclusion was, it's no different, it's the same.
Okay.
And so that bodes very well for us as we move forward, when we look at other developments. And when we have these times where we have developments that have higher than, elevations above twenty-five and below twenty-five, those are complicated areas to develop. And so what this does, it gives us another tool by which we can protect the wellfield, that we can encourage recharge. And now I have another thing I could show a developer and say, "Well, why don't, why don't you fill some more? Why don't you bring it above twenty-five? Because that shows us that we get actually more recharge." So I see this as another way for us to protect the wellfield as well as provide for development in the city.
Okay. Believe it or not, I understood exactly what you said. So I go back to you and ask a question. What question would you ask the, yeah? BFE, that they wouldn't be able to answer as far as that? Because the question was asked and answered by BFA, and it was all about basically percolation, you know, as far as where is the retention gonna be? And they basically said, "I don't care if it's twenty-five below or above, it's gonna percolate down and you got the same water quality." I think that's what I basically heard, right? So what question would you ask them that would entice us to say, "We need to get these people back there to answer some more questions"?
A lot of questions. But with regard to the particular question you just asked?
Yeah.
There was a fundamental element missed in the response.
Which was?
Retention, soil permeability is all dependent upon soil type.
Okay.
If you are putting sand over muck or hardpan, you do not have the permeability. And the ordinance as drafted, for example, doesn't address that issue at all. And there are a lot of other issues. I mean, you ask a very fundamental, basic question, and there is a big difference in soil permeability. Excellent question. And you see, the response you got didn't address that issue at all, because you cannot automatically assume that all soils have the same permeability. Right or wrong, you're making me recall back to my undergraduate degree where I studied all of that, and I understand soil permeability. So that's a fundamental element that's missing in this report. It makes an assumption that this fill goes back on type A soil, and it does not. You cannot overlook that, and it's being overlooked. So we need the consultant there to answer that question.
Member Nelson?
Dwight, let me ask you.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Because it sounds like everybody's going to need the answers to these questions. Are you looking for a presentation, or is it something you get him on the phone, do a conference call, and everybody could ask him questions?
Either way, I just think that Planning and Zoning Commission needs to have access to this information if they're going to make a recommendation.
Yes. I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Mr. Broome is probably illustrating to Mr. Stauffer my point I just made.
Sir, let's-
Okay. Thank you.
Come on.
What I was asking Mr. Stauffer is, the third bullet under BFA's report says, "Proper design should include soils beneath the pond bottom, should be backfilled with permeable soils of similar texture and hydraulic characteristics, and tested and approved by geotechnical engineer." Isn't that the point you just raised?
Yes.
And this is in the report. Then in two, it says, "The city of Titusville has adequate protections in place to ensure that the recharge can be maintained." So my question, Mr. Stauffer, is, the point you raised, is that in the report?
Well, I would ask a simple question of them. Did you take any soil samples?
Didn't what he just say speak to that issue as to what needs to be there? I'm not expert at this.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, Mr. Stauffer, would you like to comment on that?
What was the question?
Didn't what was just read speak to the question of what type of soil should be used in that area?
Yes, the way that they qualify the answer is, they talked about specifically the type of soils that should be used to backfill it.
You asked, you said nothing was said about the soil type, and I just heard somebody say that it was.
I was talking about the question that was asked here.
I'm sorry?
I was referring back to the question that was asked by-
Well, I'm referring to-
Councilmember Jordan.
Okay, well, I'm referring to the statement you made, that none of that was addressed, the soil type.
It is addressed.
Okay.
Soil types are addressed, and there are varying types of soil types on this property.
I must have misunderstood you, because what I heard, you say it wasn't addressed, period, and you had to ask them about that.
Counsel, if you don't want to authorize that, that's fine.
Sir, sir, we're asking reasonable questions, and you're getting upset. No, I don't. Okay. Do you wanna continue, or can I let Member Stauffer speak?
I, I'm just responding to questions.
Member Stokel?
I'm super outside my comfort zone, because this is definitely not my area of expertise. But from what I'm gathering, from what I'm seeing in the report, and I could be wrong- with this, it's talking about soil that you should be filling in, what type of soil to use. And I think what Mr. Severs is saying, but yeah, what, that's great if the type A soil is going there, but what's underneath it? And have we done any sampling of that soil? And does that matter? Does that make a difference? So I feel like I'm seeing a lot of unknowns, I guess, and I don't know if it's a full-on presentation that we need, but I would like to clarify, or if it's a phone conversation, somebody call, clarify our exact situation that we're dealing with. What are some of those things that we need? Doesn't matter what type of soil that the type A soil is going on, some of those things. Like I said, this is not my area of expertise, but I do want to make sure that we're addressing those if we're going to be voting on this item at the next meeting. So again, I don't know what that looks like. I don't know, I feel like if they did a report, a phone call should not cost money just to clarify something in your report, but, or if it does go more in depth from that, what that would cost to have that presentation? Because I want to make sure, again, we're making good, sound decisions up here. I think my hesitation is, this is just definitely outside my comfort zone. If we're making a decision on it, I want to make sure that I can get all the accurate information to make the best decision moving forward.
Vice Mayor.
I remember when I was running for city council, everybody was asking me questions about everything from water to lagoon to air quality, and just because you run for city council doesn't mean you're an expert on any of them. So I'm almost, I'm listening to all of this, and I'm wondering why we are getting into all the, you know, the expertise of this. This is not what I think we're supposed to do. We're supposed to have you do that and work with those people, and then it comes to us for a decision. You know, we make decisions, and we don't know about this stuff. Maybe some of you do, but I just heard some people say they don't. So I get a little frustrated, I'm like, you know, man, you know, this is, this is why we have staff. And quite honestly, it's a little frustrating to hear that we haven't had a lot of communication on this issue between P&amp;Z and, and you perhaps, Sean, your area staff. I would say, what I'm looking at here in the decision realm is, if it was me in any other realm, whether it be, you know, I hate to do this because I'll get stereotyped, but if it's, we're trying to do something athletically or football-wise, I want you guys to talk internally and then find out what the questions are, and then again, a conference call or something to the expert. I don't know that we need to pay and have the expert come down here and fly down here and do this whole program, especially not until you guys have gotten together and sits in front of you all and say, do you have an answer to that? You know, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm a little frustrated that we're trying to be experts up here on stuff we're not experts on.
Member Nelson.
I agree with Vice Mayor. I think a conference call would be helpful in just clearing up some of the issues, but I think prior to that conference call, everybody needs to sit down and say, these are the questions we have, and you probably have already done that. So I would, I would say, let's do a conference call.
Well, we haven't got to that point yet, but, I mean, the decision-making, we still have other cards and things. Sir, is there any other comments you'd like to make? All right. I'll open the public hearing. Any cards?
Yes, sir, we have one additional card from Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860.7 Avenue. I'm, I'm not sure, may I qualify myself as an expert witness on this?
This is not a quasi-judicial item.
Okay. Well, I would like to say, as an expert witness, I have sent you expert witness testimony information on April 18, 2019, requested councils and your comments on that. I didn't have, but I'm a professional engineer, professional surveyor, and I've been registered since 1976. I did numerous subdivisions in the city of Titusville, numerous site plans, and I also did surveying, complete, complete work on some, some projects. Mr. Barnes, as far as I know, he is not, he has never done a site plan in his entire life, never. Mr. Stoffler, I believe he's never done a site plan in his entire life, sealed as an engineer of record. He's never done a subdivision. So I'm reading this, but I have. I'm reading this, where is it? This ordinance, proposed ordinance, and I'll tell you what I'm reading, and I'm saying, what in the world are they doing? What in the world? I mean, it says, 25 mean sea level, it's above and below 25 feet mean sea level, and you're going to have all your retention ponds at 25 feet mean sea level? Well, how are you going to get the water that's down below here? You have to pump it up to the retention pond? Now, maybe there are some sites that you, that you can make this work, but I can imagine easily some sites, it ain't going to work at all. So I don't know what Mr. Stoffler's talking about, I don't know what Mr. Barnes is talking about. Maybe I just don't understand it, but what I read is, what I interpret is something that is absolutely nonsense. And then it goes for the same thing that I've told you before, is water flows downhill. Now, in this case, it looks like maybe you have to pump it uphill. So, so I believe that Mr. Mr. Severs has got a good point, that we ought to bring Mr. Barnes here. He knows everything about this, because I certainly don't, I can't understand this as a professional engineer. I don't, I don't see how it's going to work in a lot of sites. So what are you going to do? Pump? I don't know. I mean, you read it, I mean, if you read this thing. Here, let me read to you real quickly. For developing sites having elevations above and below 25 feet. Okay, what are you going to do? Those portions of sites which are above 25 feet shall conform to the forms. Okay, all right. And all required retention ponds shall be located in the areas above 25 feet post-development. Now, you got, you got something like this, say, it's elevation 15. What are you going to do? You're going to pump it up from 15? You can't fill 15 to 25 feet, that's 10 foot of fill. That's, okay, anyhow, you all understand, I'm ready for any questions you got, because...
Your time's up, sir.
All right. Nobody wants to give me more time? Thank you.
Rain comes from above, doesn't it? Doesn't have to be pumped uphill. Anyway, any other cards, clerk?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. It doesn't require a vote on this item, however, a request was made, and that does precipitate a...
Motion.
Yep.
So I would move to allow P&amp;Z to do a phone conference with BFA.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
We're looking at the expression on your face.
Because you always do.
Because you always express. I have a motion in a second.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
At some point, there was a comment made about giving a list of questions before the call so that the people at BFA would be aware of that. Is that the intent of the motion, or?
Well, I didn't put it in motion. Okay. But it was sort of, the idea behind it is...
Lights, light.
Sorry. If we sort of had, if we had an idea of what the phone, the questions were ahead of time, that would shorten the amount of time we were on the phone, or you guys were on the phone.
Staff would be delighted to ask each of the P&amp;Z members to provide us a list of questions, and then provide that to BFA so that they can have an opportunity to review those. But that's part of the motion.
That would be great. That can be part of the motion, yes.
City Attorney?
Yes, I just want to clarify, if we're going to do that, that should be done at the P&amp;Z meeting. We're not going to be asking P&amp;Z members to submit questions separately, because some don't understand. What we'll do is, we'll have the P&amp;Z meeting, they'll have a discussion, if you're not going to have Barnes at that meeting, it'll be a discussion of questions P&amp;Z would like to present. Then, in my opinion, we're, we're going to have to table the council meeting, so, because it's not time-sensitive, my understanding, to have P&amp;Z an opportunity at their following meeting to actually have their questions answered before they can make that recommendation for you. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that we shouldn't be getting independent, the questions need to become, arrived at at a P&amp;Z meeting by the group.
Is there any time necessity on this that is causing any problems anywhere? I mean...
I think tabling it for two weeks would be fine.
Okay. All right, Member Jordan? I'm sorry, you, Theresa?
No, I'm also thinking that through, we haven't spoken, of course, to Barnes, and you probably want some flexibility, counsel, when they talk to Barnes, depending on the cost or his availability, he may see more merit in attending the meeting than trying to do something by the phone. So I would leave that open, based on his recommendations, that if he feels it's more appropriate to have a question and answer. It's up to you, of course, but I would not want to shortcut that process by mandating that it only be a phone conference.
So I'd like to amend the motion to include a face-to-face meeting if that's appropriate.
The most efficient method, whether it's a phone call or a face-to-face, right?
Right.
I mean, that can be determined.
Can I talk now?
I'm not sure.
Well, I'm thinking about things, and I'm just wondering.
All right, go ahead.
We were talking about this, we went from a phone conversation to maybe they're going to show up, it's going to be money involved. So shouldn't we have a limit of how much money we're going to spend? I don't even know how much this is going to cost. I mean, if you say, okay, we're just going to have them come back, then we have just said that we've authorized you to spend as much money as required to get them back to the table, right? So I need to know, you know, how much we're going to be paying for this thing, and it's unnecessary.
How about if we put a limit on it?
Well, that's where I'm going, but you all don't know, right? There wasn't anything in the contract as far as phone interviews versus flying down here?
No, the scope of work that we put together, the task order that was awarded, did not include follow-up presentations or phone calls. We, you know, I guess depending on the number of questions that they prepare for, I could certainly reach out to Mr. Barnes and get perhaps an hourly rate. That's something that we could find out, and just tell him, just fill him in on the situation and let him know, and he could, he could give us a, an estimate of what that cost would be.
How much was the contract?
$3,000.
$3,000, $3,200.
It shouldn't be that much money.
Well, unless they come back and do the same thing over, you know. It's not the study, it's just...
They are one of our...
I know.
It should be less than that, yes, you're correct.
I would expect it to be less. I'd also say they are one of our continuing services consultants, and they are very responsive. They worked with the city for probably the last 25 years on our wellfields. And we have, as part of the continuing services agreements, we have negotiated hourly rates for his time in particular. So all he has to do is give me an estimate of the number of hours that it would take for him to answer the questions, prepare, and attend, and we can, you know, we can find a number that way.
And he's out of where?
Orlando area.
Oh, so yeah, there's no...
We do have a question, as, either we let them make that decision, or we put a, put a limit on it, which would you like?
Well, it's only $3,000. I don't know where the budget come from, or something like that, so. You got the money to spend on that?
Then we could, then we could let staff make that decision.
Yeah, let staff make the decision.
I would also suggest, once the questions are formulated and provided to BFA, there's going to be another council member meeting, and he could provide the quote, and you'll have that to make a decision before the next P&amp;Z meeting.
Okay, I like that.
So you would have an opportunity to evaluate that.
Okay.
I would, I believe.
You're such a good attorney. Thank you.
I also feel a need to point out, previously, Mr. Severs was test, up at the, speaking regarding the soils, and mentioned, there was nothing about the soils, and I pointed out, it does address soils. That was not a challenge. I know Mr. Severs enough, well enough to know he's read this twice or three times, and he knows that paragraph's in there. That was merely to point out, there may be something related to the soils that he has in mind that is different than is in this report. So, and I wanted him to be able to clarify that. That was the point of bringing it out, not to say he missed it, I just want to be really clear on that.
All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
To go back to my previous point or question, the Titusville Water Resources Department and P&amp;Z have not talked about this, and there's been no question time from P&amp;Z to you go.
That is correct.
And I will say, as we go forward, and we go right around that, I'm not necessarily satisfied that we are going to get the expert in here, or whoever from Barnes and Furland, et cetera, without that communication taking place. You know, in any management I've ever done, in anything I've ever done, we work internally first, and it just sounds like you thought it was pretty cut and dry, we don't need to be there. For whatever reason, they didn't get back to you guys and say, we need you here, we're not understanding this, and we have some questions. So instead of asking you all questions, we bounce right to the expert. And I'm a little concerned that we didn't have any internal city communication between our P&amp;Z and our Water Resource Department, and we're bouncing straight to an expert. And I know that's what P&amp;Z wants to do, but I would say, if I was to get, be the king, I would say, why aren't you talking to them first, and then we'll talk about the expert if you can't understand it after that? I'm just going to lay that on the table.
I like that.
Well, I would say your concern is very legitimate, and we certainly would expect in the future that that problem wouldn't occur, but I think the motion that's there is...
I get where we're at. I'm just saying that concerns me, that if we...
Okay, I just, I just want to stop the process, because we need to go forward with it. So yours, so, City Attorney, is that another light, or is that an old light I have up here?
Old light.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Same sign?
No. Because I can do it.
But do you do it just to do it?
No, I'm not doing it because I think Member Diesel had a great point, that if we can save money by having staff be at the next meeting and answer some of these questions, then we don't need to spend the money.
Well, they're making that decision. What's the most efficient way to do this? I mean...
Yeah, clearly, since I said it, I agree with what you're saying. At the same time, I feel like there, there is that motion, I feel like I even got in there behind it, where I got to say what I had to say.
Right, and that's the way I felt, too, yeah.
So, I mean, I'm all for whatever's going to work.
Right.
I don't understand why we don't talk to each other.
Right. That's where I was, so.
It passed unanimously with one opposition.
Okay.
Next item, sir, wherever it is.
Next, next item is 10B, Small Scale Amendment with Rezoning, SSA number 2, 2019. For 2001 South Street, parcel 514, this includes ordinance number 28, 2019, and ordinance number 29, 2019. I would like to read both of those ordinances at this time. Ordinance number 28, 2019, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville, by changing the land use designation on approximately 7.93 acres of property located at 2001 South Street, parcel 514, by replacing the low-density residential and amending the downtown mixed-use high-density residential and conservation future land use designations with the downtown mixed-use conservation and high-density residential future land use designations, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 29, 2019, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 5, 1993, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference, by replacing the present single-family medium-density R1B zoning district and amending the multifamily high-density residential R3 and open space and recreation OR zoning districts with the multifamily high-density residential R3 and open space and recreation OR zoning districts on approximately 7.93 acres of property located at 2001 South Street, parcel 514, and providing for an effective date.
This is the first reading. The public hearing will be held at the regular city council meeting on September 10, 2019, at 6:30. The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning authority, agency, tabled this item to the regularly scheduled meeting on September 4, 2019, 5:0.
Okay, staff, any comments? Council, any questions? I see no lights.
We have one card, sir.
Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston.
I'd like to, I'm asking to, I'm requesting to be recognized an expert witness on what I have to say. Is that, can that be done?
This is not the public hearing, we're not taking evidence as a first reading. The public hearing will be held at, I believe, the next council meeting, if we saw.
All right, so I can't be recognized, but here's what I want to say, especially Mr. Diesel, listen to this, because he, he says that, boy, Stan, what are you doing all these things? So anyhow, there's a bunch of errors that staff have made. I'm going to point out to you some errors. I want you to loosen up this time, because you say, everything say, oh, Stan Johnston, you're wrong. One thing they said is that people being notified, that's wrong. They need to notify more people, and they're going to do that.
They need to notify more people, and they're going to do that. The soils map, the soils map there is absolutely ridiculous. Soils map they showed there, it's on figure three, it's gross errors in the soils map. It shows Timoca Muck. It's a big, it's right there in the middle sand. So that's another big error. Flood zone map, flood zone map, that's wrong, too. Staff did it wrong. It's wrong. It's the wrong flood zone map presented, and they'll correct that. Number three. It, there, the, I want to just comment about the OR zoning, 1993 OR zoning. OR zoning, if you look at those maps, you see, wow, big mistake made there, 1993, it shows a big area of OR zoning, and now we're going to, now we've got somebody in there to do wetlands, and by God, they're saying it's way wrong. So you know what that OR zoning did back in 1993? It rezoned R3 property that at one time was zoned 20 units per acre, it went down to zero units per acre, just letting you know that. That was a big mistake by the city. So what I'm saying to you is something is that this property, as represented right now in this report, is far better off than it is represented by this report. So I'm saying I'm against this report because of the errors that need to be corrected. So I'm looking forward to that, and I want you to understand, in this particular area, is this is where we put one of our, one of city's dams. And what that dam did is it raised the water, the water table, and also it increased the wetlands. So when you increase the wetlands, what do you do? You reduce the value of the property. And that's what, that's what the city did on this case. Not only did they zone it OR, where it shouldn't have been zoned OR, by God, they increased the wetlands. So this is what the city has done, and the property is, like I said, is more valuable than what it is represented by the report. Any questions that you have of me? Thank you. Any other cards, clerk? Next item, sir? Yeah, this is, does not require a vote, so.
Next item is 10C, Hole Nine Yards, rezoning number 2, 2019. Ordinance number 30, 2019, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 5, 1993, of the City of Titusville, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by replacing the present light industrial services and warehousing M1 zoning with community commercial zoning for a .59 acre property located at 486 North Washington Avenue, and providing for an effective date.
This is the first reading. The public hearing is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on September 10, 2019, at 6:30. The Planning and Zoning Commission tabled this item to the regularly scheduled meeting on September 4, 2019, 5:0. We have one card, it's Mr. Honeycutt, and he is available to answer any questions if you have them.
Is there any questions for Mr. Honeycutt? Apparently not, sir.
I have one question.
Well, put your light on.
I'm sorry. Actually, not for him. I just want to know why it was tabled.
I have no light, but.
There was a, there's a requirement to hold a community meeting, and that was not done prior to the PNZ. So the meeting has been held now, and the PNZ can consider this.
Okay.
Any other questions from counsel? I see none. I'll open the public hearing. Any cards on this one?
No, sir, other than Honeycutt, Mr. Honeycutt.
Okay, close the public hearing, and this does not require a vote, so next item, please.
Yes, sir, we have our Public Works will present a solid waste rate review presentation to counsel.
We have a short presentation. You already provided the budget, so this is just, I actually already got our rate increase request and our rate comparisons at the last budget workshop, so we're just going to go through Kevin Cook, Polaris Director, Sandra Reeler, Deputy Polaris Director, so move on. So this is just our annual rate review. We'll go over just some observations we saw the last year, just some generalized budget changes, the rate strategies, and then a comparison for residential and commercial services on our rates. So just a general overview of the last 12 months, we've seen our residential customers up very slightly, less than 1%, while our tonnage has gone down. We're billing up on commercial dumpsters about a full percentage point, and the tonnage there is actually down nearly 10%. And dumpster rentals are down slightly. A big one, our recycling tonnage is actually down about 2% over the last year, seeing a trend that we're losing some of our recycling not being put in the stream. So just looking at our proposed budget, we do have a revenue increase of about 7%. Our biggest jump is purchase proceeds. We're looking at two large vehicle purchases, so that's our debt service coming in. Overall, our expenses are up about 9%. We are adding staff to solid waste for the first time in a number of years, and we did see jumps in refuse of about 12. Our fleet's up about a full 33%. Any repairs to our trucks are quite expensive, and we have run through quite a few repairs the last year. Recycling as well is up about 12% overall. And our non-departmental's are up about five. We did see a fairly large jump in our general fund admin fees on the new restructuring from the consultant, but that's absorbed with some savings elsewhere. Overall, up about $600,000 overall for the fund. So the strategy we took to address this is we looked at, similarly to the other utility you can hear about tonight with stormwater, we looked at the CPI for the last year from April to April, as we run our budget numbers, which is about a flat 2%. So we proposed a 2% increase, except for recycling, which we are proposing. Actually, that's wrong, it's a half a percent increase for recycling due to lack of solid goods and the tonnage going down. If you follow the news, basically, recycling, when they try to sell the goods, there is no market anymore. So we are losing about $140,000 a year in recycling right now to our vendor that does our sorting, because they are unable to sell it. And we partner with Recycle America, whose parent is Waste Management. If they can't sell it, no one can, because that's, they're the biggest in the business. So just to give you an idea, for the refuse side, for a residence, it's going to be about a $2.87 impact for the year. So recycling's about 31 cent per year. So for a little less than $3 a year increase for the residences. Just to give you an idea of our service breakdown based on tons for the last year, we did about 40% of all our tons came from our commercial customers, about 33 from our residential. 15% went to the mulching facility through yard debris. A little bit of significance the last 12 months is we didn't do, the bulk of that didn't incorporate Irma or any comparisons now, so we're kind of clear just regular yard debris. Recycling makes about seven. Our bulk collection, which is anything outside your card, is about three, and we did street sweep a good bit this year, which there's a huge benefit to the lagoon for street sweeping. We get a very large credit for the B map through street sweeping. It's actually one of our better ongoing programs. So just to give you an idea of our residential rate trend, I charted out the CPI versus our rates, and where we are right now, based upon CPI for about the last 10 years, is we fall about 5% below the CPI trend. When we automated the system, we were able to hold rates down for a number of years for residential. We didn't ask for increases. We did start to pick up increases again in recent years, but we have stayed below the CPI trend. Just to give you an idea of a typical bill and how it's going to change, we bill out refuse and recycling on one bill, on your water bill. Residents do pay a franchise fee to the city as well, a 10%. This isn't incorporating it, but you're looking at a total increase of $3.24 to the typical single-family residents. It'll be a little less for the multifamilies, because they're billed out at three-quarters of a single-family. So rate comparison-wise, this is the best data we have so far. Some of these are going to go up as they're in their budget process, and the county is increasing their assessments, I believe, again, so they will probably be right at us, maybe jump close to us or past us. But we're about mid-pack on the residential side. So moving to the commercial, again, we trended out just 2009 to date, and commercial falls about 17% below that trend line. We did reduce commercial rates for about two years. We actually lowered our per cubic yard rates and took off a number of our high charges on our rentals. We leveled out the playing field for rentals, which was a benefit to us and the customer. We can switch out sizing without costing you more money. So, and just to give you an idea, this is eight by six containers, eight cubic yards, picked up six days a week, which would be a large, very large restaurant, which we have a number of. So they do, this is the worst-case scenario, commercial. So again, you build out refuge collection, recycling, service fees, and a rental fee for our dumpster, and they see about a $200 increase on the year. Obviously, this is a large customer, so these are not your smaller businesses that see this, and this was the worst case. And then rate comparison on our commercial rates, we are on the low end of our commercial side. Pretty much everyone else on this list, except for Rockledge, are serviced by contract providers. They do set the rates for them, but we're extremely competitive on the commercial side. And like I said, the recommendations we have that you'll see at the budget hearings is a 2% for refuse and 2.5% for recycling fees across the board. Be happy to answer any questions you have, and the ordinances will come with the budget hearings.
Any questions from counsel? I don't see any. Nice presentation.
All right. We have a, we have a card, sir.
Okay, we have one card.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. Our solid waste services, I think it's the very highest. It's the best I've seen. I don't know anywhere in the nation's better than what we have. It's really tops, and they, I mean, I even think about the collection of the yard waste and trash. It's just tops. So I'm just, Mr. Cook and staff is doing a fantastic job. Thank you. Thank you. Next item, I don't see any other questions, so next item, sir?
I assume you'll accept the presentation? Yep. Yes, sir, we're on 12B. This is the stormwater rate resolution. On June 13, 2017, city council approved an interlocal agreements between Brevard County Property Appraiser and the Brevard County Tax Collector for services related to stormwater billing, non-ad valorem assessment. On August 14, 2018, city council approved ordinance 36, 2018, amending chapter one, article five, stormwater management utility, to allow an annual increase in stormwater service rates by no more than a percentage equal to the Consumer Price Index and not to exceed 3% annually. The Consumer Price Index increase is 2.0% for the year ending in April 2019. Therefore, staff is proposing a 2% rate increase. Citizens were notified of this proposed rate change in a public meeting and on their utility bills during the month of July. This resolution certifies that stormwater utility assessment roles for the municipal fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and authorizes the mayor to sign the certificate of non-ad valorem assessment role for transmittal to the tax collector's office. And we have a presentation by probably Sandy on this one, right? No, Kevin? All right.
Okay, so switching cats, we'll switch over to stormwater this time. As State Manager mentioned, we, stormwater is now in the non-ad valorem line of the tax bill. So just a little history, the utility was established in 1990, originally billed out as a standalone bill, and that ran for a number of years until recently. We moved over to non-ad valorem assessments in 2018, and the last time we, before, you actually shifted over to where we're doing the concept of the CPI or not to exceed 3%, 3% a year. And we did, last year at this time, we were asked to advertise this rate increase along with solid waste on the water bills, which we did in July of this year. So, State Manager mentioned, we again check CPI versus April 2018 to April 2019, which when we first submitted our revenue estimates for budget purposes, and we are seeking a 2% increase to the assessment. Stormwater historically has ran a 2.5% guaranteed increase, so we are confining to the CPI. Just to give you an idea, the summary of fees, about $26,000 billed customers right now, 6,000 of those are vacant, they are not billed stormwater. So as they develop, they do get billing. You'll see some get credit if they have a permitted pond that has treatment ability, they will get a credit for their stormwater bills, so they'll drop themselves from $91 to $64 roughly for a single family. Commercials are billed out differently. They are billed by what their actual coverages are for impervious area. So the non-ad valorem assessment around 2.7 million for next year. So just to give you an idea, rate comparison, rates for stormwater are a little harder to compare because they are subjective and different formulas. So the Florida Stormwater Association puts out, they try to equalize that, so that's where we generate this from. And again, these are best data at the time around July this year that we have these. So some of these are going to move around as people increase their rates during this year's process of their own cities and county. We are about mid-pack. It's a huge range, and to explain a little bit of the range, that every city funds things differently from stormwater. A lot of cities, it's rolled into their streets departments. You've had it as like the county doesn't fund Red and Bridge with their stormwater fees, they fund natural resources, so their maintenance is funded by the MSTUs. Palm Bay has different staffing levels than we do, so it's a very hard thing to blend together and look at. But to give you an idea of where the budget goes for next year, we are a little less than $1 million in operating personnel. We are adding a staff member to stormwater, again, to raise the standards, again, for our maintenance efforts. Operating's up about 20%. Half a million dollars rolled into operating, most of that is fleet, again, on parts and fuel. Non-departmental does have a significant decrease, depending on the transfers out for projects and some of the other items we pay. We do have about a 38% reduction there. We did raise the transfer to solid waste. Solid waste operates the street sweepers, and we pay a 50-50 split. Stormwater pays half, solid waste pays the other half, but they do reside in solid waste. And then our transfer to the capital improvement fund is down, but that's, we have a number of grant projects that come in throughout the year, so we're funding a half a million, moving over to capital. So to give you an idea of where the money goes in capital, next year we are splitting half, maintenance half, water quality. We have done a significant number of water quality improvements over the past few years, heavily grant-funded through Save Our Lagoon and some of the other grant programs. In the bottom chart, you'll see that we currently active projects, about 1.4 million in maintenance out there, a little over 2.5 in water quality. And the big question that stormwater gets asked a lot is how, what are we doing to help the lagoon? So although the B map has changed with the influx of the Save Our Lagoon program, we do still chart ourselves against the years that were set aside for the different phases. And we are in phase two, and we're well over halfway to the goals of finishing out phase two. And we do have a number of projects on the books that are coming online in the near future. We also have, with our interlocal agreement of Save Our Lagoon, we actually will garner credits from other municipalities as they do projects funded through Save Our Lagoon, and they share ours as well. And be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from counsel? I see none. Again, thank you.
We have one card, sir.
And we have a card. Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I have a number of concerns that are going on, and as you, as you know, I've sent numerous emails about the water flows downhill, and today I sent you an email on legal positive outfall. This has to do with safety, legal positive outfall. It has to do with the drainage relief west of I-95, and that we do not have legal positive outfall as defined by the City of Titusville. So this is a safety issue, and I want to remind you is that, is that the City of Titusville has not spent one penny, nickel, or anything to remove any home in the 100-year floodplain through a capital improvement project. So that's, has to do with safety, health, welfare of the people, and other, that water quality has to do with the, but I believe safety is priority to the water quality. And for me to share with you is that we haven't put one penny into any capital improvement to remove any homes from the 100-year floodplain is quite a statement, and that's at least for the last 40 years that I know of. Well, it started about 1972, '76, or something like that, with the FEMA came into play. So we used to pay $27 a sofa residence, now we're paying $91. So we used to pay $27 for sofa residents, now we're paying $91. So it's, it's a change, and I see no money spent on that, what I'm, I told you about. So, so we're going to have 2.2 billion, $715,000. And I've asked the question about who in the world is reviewing for stormwater, because before Mr. Cook came in, is that, is that, I look for a review of stormwater plans, and it's absent, absent from some reviews. Don't even review it for a stormwater plan. In fact, this Mr. Stauffer didn't even know that we had a stormwater master plan when I first met him in 2012. Never even saw city stormwater master plan, yet he's in charge of it. That's pretty shocking, but I know you don't interested in what I have to say. But consider it, ask him. Mr. Stauffer, he doesn't, he, as far as a stormwater master plan, doesn't even know about it. So who's doing it? Who is reviewing for stormwater? So when you consider this, think about some, how you spend this money, because it's certainly not going for the safety. Is that it? Thank you. Your time's up, sir. Okay. Next item, please.
Yes, sir, we will need to vote on this.
Oh, sorry.
To approve a resolution.
I lose track for some reason.
It's getting light.
My mind starts to wander at a certain place.
It's getting light.
No, not only that.
Move to approve resolution number 46 dash 2019, certifying the rate in annual stormwater utility assessment role.
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. All right, next item, please.
Dual member of the P and Z and the Titusville Environmental Commission. During the November 13th, 2018, regular city council meeting, the council tabled the appointment of a regular member to the Titusville Environmental Commission from the Planning and Zoning Commission to serve in dual membership and, to both boards. Council also requested staff review the purpose of the dual membership and bring back recommendations. Staff recommends that the dual membership requirement be removed from the code as the TEC and PZ, P and Z operate independently of each other, and, and there appears to be few instances where requests are made between the two commissions. If council prefers both commissions to remain informed on each other's activities, staff would, could provide regular meeting minutes and semi-annual reports of the one commission to the other, or require an annual joint report meeting between them.
Your pleasure.
We do have a card.
There we go. Member Nelson.
Do you want to do the card? Well, okay.
Do what?
My, my suggestion, and this is how this came up. Originally, we were trying to figure out what the, the ordinance has said, and apparently it was somebody from P and Z was supposed to go to TEC basically as an alternate member. However, when I was talking to Brian Bobbitt, he was happy to go to planning and zoning from TEC and be an alternate member there. I sort of liked the idea because I thought that way you have, okay.
Stop breaking the equipment.
Been doing that all night.
That's already, this is the last time we use your news.
It's been doing that all night. Because they may have some information that might help planning and zoning, planning and zoning might have information that would help TEC. So my thought was if Mr. Bobbitt is good enough to want to do both boards, that we should allow him to do both boards, and that, that council should be able to either appoint somebody from P and Z to go to TEC as an alternate, or from TEC to P and Z as an alternate.
Are you saying one or the other, or are you saying both?
I'm saying it should be able to go both ways. We should, you know, if, the problem was, is I understand P and Z had a conversation about who wants to go to TEC, and I think Mr. Seaver said, "I'll go if nobody else wants to go," but we have somebody who is enthusiastic and wants to go the other way. So I hate to, to take somebody's enthusiasm and, and.
If, if we have a volunteer, I don't see a problem with it, but I, I don't see a need for it both ways.
Oh, no, I'm, that's, I'm sorry, I don't think I was clear. That it would be one person that would either go from P and Z to TNC, TEC, or one person from TEC going the other way.
And we have the one person.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Member Stokel?
Thank you. Is this alternate or a regular member? I guess that would be my question. I thought it was.
It, it's a regular member. The, the code reads that at least one member of TEC shall currently be a member of P and Z. Your P and, planning and zoning board is full. So at this point, it would be appointing one of your P and Z members to fill the vacancy in your TEC, because the vacancy is there waiting for that P and Z member to fill that vacancy.
Okay. And that's, yeah, I guess that was maybe my follow-up question. I, and I, and I guess I don't know, do we know how many members are on each board?
There are seven members on your planning and zoning commission.
Okay.
Seven members on your TEC, so they both have seven.
Okay, which is what, I was going to go at, an odd number, so in case of ties. My, I tend to agree with you. I, I think if we had an opening on P and Z, I think Mr. Bobbitt would be perfect for that, just with his passion for the environmental commission and wanting to serve on P and Z. But it's full right now, so I don't know how that would work, or if it's something that we keep in mind, you know, moving forward, if an opening, open, happens to open up, keep, I, I would like to see somebody from the environmental commission be on there. I see what you're saying too, as well as like, the opposite. So if we didn't have somebody, but again, I get stuck on the number of people.
Well, I think.
Seven, because now we'd go up to eight.
Right, and I think we could turn around and just say, change the ordinance so that.
If there was an opening.
If there's an opening that we can.
One go.
Point one to the other.
Yeah.
And if somebody wants to do it, I mean.
Right.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
We have a volunteer from one or the other.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else? Member Jordan?
I just got a concern about what you just asked to happen, because we just happen to have somebody who wants to do it. And to me, we should have a code where if there is an option, but it doesn't, it doesn't need to be mandatory. I, I think that's where I'm trying to go, because we just happen to have somebody. But if you don't have anybody, then we should just leave it alone. We shouldn't have a requirement.
That's what they said.
To get it done.
That's what.
No, they were talking about back and forth. If it's not P and Z, it's TNC, it's TNC, it's P and Z.
Yeah, but it would, it would still be a volunteer in either case.
But that's not what the code says, right? It's a, it's a mandatory requirement right now, correct, to be due.
Correct.
That's what we're trying to do, is to change the code. I mean, we, that's what the purpose of this is, to determine what we want to do in the future as opposed to the way it's set up now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe we're not communicating.
Then we're all in agreement.
As long, as long as the code is saying mandatory, if I'm hearing what the mayor is saying, you're saying it's a voluntary thing, but it's not going to be in the code that it's going to be mandatory.
Right, your code as set up now is you shall not appoint a person to serve on two boards. The only instance you can do that is you should have a member of TEC be on your P and Z. Now, if, if you had an, an opening on your P and Z, you could choose to have one of your TEC members apply for that position, and you could put them in that position. You just don't have that right now. I don't think it takes a code change to do that, because one of your TEC members shall also be a member of your T, P and Z. So if you happen to have an opening on your P and Z, and you had a TEC member that wanted to fill the role.
But that's the key word right there, wanting to.
Right, you could do that, but I'm just saying.
Right now, it says mandatory. I mean, Robert's.
That's what I was, I thought it was a mandatory.
Well, it's just mandatory that one, one of your TEC be on P and Z.
Right.
Well, we're saying we have a volunteer, and we don't.
But you don't have an opening on your P and Z. You do have a volunteer, there's just no opening on your P and Z to put that person in.
But you're, you're not taking out the word mandatory, and that's what she said, that's what he said.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get to.
They all said, they, they said they don't want to make it mandatory, but if somebody like Mr. Bobbitt wanted to do it, that would be a nice addition.
Sure, it would be a council's discretion that you want to, you want to appoint that position, and you, you could say it could be a member of TEC.
Well, I guess, my thought is that.
I'm sorry, Sarah, have you been called yet? I can't remember.
I have one more question.
Okay.
So as the code reads now, say that our environmental commission was full, and then the code says, hey, we need somebody from P and D to be on it. What happens then? Do we have eight members on TEC?
We have left that open.
You left it intentionally open.
Correct. If you look at, if you, if you currently look at your Titusville Environmental Commission membership chart, it says vacant, dual role of P and Z to be filled. So it is left so you can.
I'm sorry.
Honor that obligation to have a P and Z member on TEC.
Okay. So I, I, from what I'm gathering, I feel like we need, the only thing that we need an ordinance on based on this voluntary versus mandatory thing is that the dual membership, like that's an option, because right now you can't serve on two boards. So we just need to make it clear in our ordinance that this is, would be the exception, should this happen, because at that point, I mean, we all might not be on council later down the road, they may not feel, but at least we have it in here that we feel that it's appropriate and perhaps beneficial for somebody to serve on both of these two boards.
But it's voluntary, not mandatory.
Correct, and it's, yes, voluntary, not mandatory. So they, we can still fill the boards, but should an opening come up, we know that precedent has been set.
Is that a motion? Oh, wait a minute.
Do we have cards? Yes, you do. You have one card.
Do you want to speak, Brian?
Call a card, please.
I'm just here to answer any questions on if they're working.
Let me say thank you for volunteering, and had the position been open, obviously everybody would have loved you to do it. And perhaps it will happen in the future, and you'll have that opportunity, but it's just not there because of what you've heard tonight.
But the windows are open.
That's exactly right. The opportunity is there.
So I suppose my motion would be to amend the ordinance to state that voluntary or mandatory, someone could serve on both the Planning and Zoning and Environmental Commission Board.
Say, state that again, I'm sorry.
Oh, I knew you were going to say.
Well, I heard you say mandatory, as opposed to mandatory, or?
Sorry, yes, you heard correctly. Voluntarily serve on two, may voluntarily serve on both boards.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I would second it, but I would ask that we put in there that, that we would prefer to have somebody on both boards.
Okay, that's fine.
If possible.
That would count both ways.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that's enough direction for you staff.
Which was.
The intent, the intent behind there.
It can work both ways. In both cases, it's voluntary, if the need, if the possibility arrives.
Basically, what, yeah, you can serve on both of these boards when it's not possible on the other ones.
And second, agrees with that? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign? Passes unanimously. We've already done D, thank goodness. Thank you, sir.
One, five.
Yeah, well, your government in action. Mayor and council reports, I have my report in there. Council, which, oh, petitions from the, the shit, 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 and requests.
What? What did you say?
That's what I said. And I'm sticking to it.
You sticking to it?
Any cards? Anybody from, audience would like to speak? I see no one. Council reports, I mean, I've already said it, I have the mayor's, so, council reports.
Hey, get the mayor's report first, sir.
I said.
Hey, we have, we have a card on that.
Oh, we have a card on the mayor's report?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, call the card.
Stan Johnston.
Okay, council reports.
I have one.
Have any cards?
I'm, I got a light.
City manager's report.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I said I have a light.
Oh, I got two of them.
I got some light.
Your first, your first.
Just get some, some little good, some good news out there. I had a very proud week in regards to former students, athletes, efforts and accomplishments. I'd be remiss if I didn't note that Paul Calumna, a former player and wrestler of mine, is the new head coach at Titusville High School, and they won their first game, won their first game in a, in a while. I'll leave it at that.
Wow.
And so right this very official moment, Titusville High School's 1-0. So congratulations to Paul Calumna and Ms. Gonzalez, the new principal there, who is married to one of our sergeants here. So that's a big deal. I went to the Grove Church on Sunday, and, and it's a great church, my son goes there, Scott, but I went because Brad Russell is the minister, and he's a former football player of mine, and was very close to that family. His brother Barry is the minister out at Port St. John. So it just meant a lot for me. I'm an IRC Methodist guy, but I just wanted to go and see him preach, and it was just pretty special. I've got pictures on my phone if you want to see them, but anyway. And then last but not least, I went by the North Brevard Wrestling Association building on Hopkins. They were in action yesterday, and boy, if you walk into a wrestling room and the windows are closed, it's hot as a mug.
Oh, I thought you were going to say.
And so, so Jason Johnson and his brother Shannon Johnson have really put this together, and it's not just them, and they'd be upset if I didn't say there was a whole lot more people, including their wives, and, but they have over 50 kids in there, from kindergarten to high school. And I've certainly been to some round tables and some panel discussions lately, you know, there's nothing for our kids to do. Well, I can tell you that there is another place right there on Hopkins, they'll take anybody who wants to drop in. We've talked over and over about Willie Taylor's group, there's just a lot to do, but just very proud of, you know, I've always, you know, you played the saying, you know, together we can make a difference. Well, as I look down the road, and I get older, and these guys are coming up, they're making a difference, and that made me real proud this weekend. So I just wanted to throw those guys' names out there and feel good about it.
I would be remiss if I, if I didn't mention that I know both Barry and Brad, their families, and they're great people. I've attended their church here at the old Goodings, and it's, it's, see, that's what happens. We have, we have one of our stems coming through, really, seriously. But I've, I've been to that church at, at Goodings, and they're, they're reconstructing it, basically, and they're doing a great job, and their services are always very interesting.
Yes.
Yes, exactly.
Yes.
So, okay, Member Stokel, you got some light up there.
Yes, thank you. I'm kind of sad Brian sat through our entire meeting and then decides to leave. I was going to publicly acknowledge him that he just became the official executive director of Keep Brevard Beautiful. I think it was.
Oh, really?
Yeah, last week, so really, really proud of him, and we are very blessed and lucky to have him serving on our board. So he stayed the whole time, but decides to leave, so. And then the other thing.
He's modest.
I know, I know.
Knew you were going to do that.
I attended the annual conference for the Florida League of Cities. It did not disappoint. Again, thank you guys for all of your support in sending me there. A wealth of information, I don't want to get into everything, but I will just touch on just a couple things. One, I went to a workshop on the ADA lawsuits that are happening, so I, I was able to kind of see what was going on across other cities, what cities were settling for, so I would just like to say I think we caught it at the right time. I think our staff reacted appropriately, and it made me feel very fortunate with the decisions that we have made thus far moving forward. Another thing, we, the league will be sponsoring, this has been a dream of mine for the past Another thing, we, the league will be sponsoring, this has been a dream of mine for the past two years, a young elected officials caucus within the league. So other young elected officials throughout the state of Florida, for us to try to get together and really get mentorship, train up others to get involved as people start kind of retiring or leaving it to really train up the next generation. So I was very, very pleased that that actually has now come to fruition. And then.
Sorry, what's, you know.
Yeah, I don't think you qualify, Robert. No, I'm just kidding. We have not, we have not set an age on it, but.
That was a little turkey, too.
The, the, I know. Hey, I know you guys all appreciate and respect the young millennial generation, okay? And then our assistant city attorney over here, Chelsea, and I attended our policy workshop. So I was happy to have Chelsea there, setting our priorities within our committee. And so our top priority is the short-term rentals, again, addressing those issues, and they are looking to come at it with a different approach, which I was kind of happy to see. Other issues on the priority list, medical marijuana, cybersecurity, and then last one was the smoke-free areas. If you guys remember, this was been a passion of mine, we cannot regulate smoking in our public parks right now. So I, actually, that's been a personal thing of mine, so while it's one of the league's priorities, it's not their top priority at this time, but it's still on the list, so that gives me some leverage. I'm going to be working to get a rep and a senator to potentially sponsor that in the House, so maybe we will have some authority with our local parks. So I will keep you posted on that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Member Jordan?
I only have one thing, and just want to wish Jolynn Nelson a happy birthday today.
Oh, happy birthday to you.
Thank you, thank you. You're not gonna sing?
No, please don't sing.
Richard, too. Richard's birthday, too, was last week.
Oh, happy birthday. Happy birthday. I don't know about your birthday, but mine was an interesting birthday.
We're not gonna ask you what that means.
I, I was working over in the Carter House today, and the sheriff was kind enough to let us have some of the inmates to help, and they serenaded me with happy birthday.
Oh, isn't that nice?
And so there were inmates, and four or five friends came in, and we were all working, and, yeah.
Had a good time.
They sang happy birthday to us.
That's very nice.
Yeah.
Very nice indeed. Okay. Any other council members have anything they'd like to talk about?
We have a card on council reports.
We have a pass. Thank you. City managers report.
Yes, sir, I have no action items, but I do have a, I issued an emergency purchase order for two variable frequency drive pumps, and I just wanted council to be informed that the first, the pump that we had to repair, the repairs are $21,000, $21,752.01. And what we did when we found that one pump that was bad, these are the giant pumps, by the way, we went back and looked at the other pumps, because if we had one go bad, we wanted to check the other. So we did find some, some damage to one of them. So I issued a, a second emergency purchase order for that one, and that one was $13,015.19. Within the Labor Day holiday is coming up, of course, and the day you get back, on Tuesday, you'll have your first budget hearing, so just let you know that.
Thanks.
We do have a card on my report, subject to your questions.
Okay. Okay, pass. Anything else, city manager?
No, sir.
All right. City attorney?
Yes, sir, as previously noted on my council meeting, I have an item.
I have an item to add to your agenda. As council is aware, the city is currently involved in litigation in the middle district in the accessibility case of Price versus City of Titusville. Plaintiff's attorney has contacted us and has asked, does the city will be willing to agree to a stipulated dismissal of this case with prejudice with no payment of fees, as opposed to his previous entry of a consent decree and payment of a settlement figure of 1,750. So he has agreed to dismiss this case with prejudice. So if council is interested in that stipulated dismissal, I would ask for a motion approving that.
I think we should quickly.
Would so quickly say, move to approve that settlement.
I have a motion and a second from Member Stokel. Third, fourth, and fifth.
Before we vote, we do have a card on the item.
Sir?
We have a card, sir.
Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston.
I thought he was gonna really make it through tonight. Regarding this, that it's dismissed with prejudice, I believe you said, so I'm, I'm asking you to explain what this means when you say with prejudice on this particular case.
The plaintiff's agreed to dismiss the case and not have the ability to refile. Sometimes you have a case dismissed, and they want to clean it up and refile. With prejudice means that he has dismissed his suit, and he will not file the suit again.
Well, it's like you won, didn't it, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
Well, how can you not?
He what? He, he, there was, there is no suit. It's gone away.
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay, I'm, I'm just getting clarification.
We didn't have to pay the 1,750.
Fantastic.[1726.62]